Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council meeting for May. Tonight, we have a special presentation before we move into our meeting. Four years ago, we started our Top Gun Night Run, and we did that to raise funds for the Jeff Coos Memorial. And we wanted to make sure that taxpayer dollars were not going to the upkeep of the memorial. But when we started that, we were hopeful at some point, we would begin to raise enough money that we would be able to offer scholarships in Jeff's name. And this year is that year, and we have been so excited about this process. We had 20 applicants, and let me just tell you, it was a tough job narrowing down to three because all 20 were so deserving. I want to tell you about our committee members. I was lucky enough to be on the committee. Kelly Goose Tree, who is with us tonight, is going to come up and speak in just a second. She is a principal at Brown's Chapel and has been on the committee since the inception of building the memorial. And Kelly was also instrumental in building a curriculum. So when kids come to the memorial on a field trip, they can begin to study about the military, the history of Smyrna in regards to the military. So Kelly has done an outstanding job. John Black, who was not able to be with us tonight. Landy Har- Harnish Fager, how do you say it? Landy, help me out, remind me.
Harnish Fager.
Harnish Fager, there we go. And then Janet Coos, who is Jeff's mom, is also on the committee, and they joined us remotely. Landy, I'm assuming, are you in Pensacola right now?
I am, I'm home for the day today or tomorrow.
And Janet, are you in Durango?
I sure am, it's windy and cold.
Ah, well, it's getting ready to be rainy here, but I just want to say how much I appreciate all of those that have been on the committee. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly to come up and tell us a little bit about our recipients. And Kelly, I think I'm going to give you this microphone, and I'll let you face the audience, so everybody can see you on TV.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor, for allowing me to be a part of all of this from the beginning. I have been so blessed to have the opportunity to serve on this committee, and this is a brainchild of the mayor's, and she's been the passion and the drive behind it since the very beginning. And it's because of her that we have this beautiful memorial and that we've taken it to the next level now. And I want to say a big thank you to our committee members, particularly Ms. Coos, Jeff's mother. And she expressed years ago, when we first dedicated the memorial, that one of the things that Jeff cared most about was going and being with children and going to schools and spreading his love for flying and his commitment to this country and about service, and it just meant so much to him outside of flying, and that was his favorite thing. And it really resonated with me and with the mayor, former educator, and we've really wanted since the inception to build this scholarship. So it's just a series of a lot of hard work and people with passion, and I'm grateful to live in a community where people celebrate true heroes and want to lift them up in a world that, you know, doesn't always do that. So it's a real honor and a blessing, Landy, to serve with all of you and be a part of this. So with no further ado, I want to bring up our students who impressed us so much this year. So Emma, Cheryl Lynn, and Carlos, come on up. As the mayor said, we had 20 applicants, and any of them could have been standing here in this moment. It was, they were all extremely deserving and worthy. But these three went through all the things, did a great interview with us, completed a really, a pretty rigorous resume and letters. They had wonderful letters from all of their supporters that recommended them highly, and they had exemplary service. I think that's the one thing that really stood out with you three is the service that you've done. That is really, it's not just what you've done in the past, it's what we could see you're going to do in the future. And you have a big commitment to this community, to being a volunteer, to giving back, and those are the principles that we're looking for in this. That's the life that Captain Coos led, giving the ultimate sacrifice. So thank you so much for, even at your young ages, wanting to do something for your community. It means so much. So I wanted to say a couple of things about all of you because you impressed us, and your resumes were so big that I've consolidated them onto little handy handy cards here. But first, there's Carlos Leon, and we just loved meeting you, Carlos. You impressed us from the start. And have you graduated yet?
I'll graduate on this Sunday.
Okay, so going to graduate next week, this week?
This Sunday.
This Sunday, okay. So he's going to graduate from Smyrna High. He's going to attend Lincoln Tech to major as an automotive technician. He's also is going to go to MTSU to major in accounting because he wants to run the business. He's been in the Beta Club, Mu, Alpha, Theta Club, worked 16 hours weekly at Aven Hotel, and he's in the National Society of High School Scholars. So very impressed with all of your hard work. This is Emma Gray here next to me. She's a graduate, has Central graduated?
Yes, sir.
She's a graduate of Central Magnet. She's a salutatorian. Did you give a speech yesterday?
No.
No, because there's like a million over there, right? She's going to attend the University of Tennessee at Knoxville, and she's going to study engineering. Emma served as the clerk of the court at the Youth in Government 2024 State Convention. She's co-founder and treasurer of the Mental Health Initiative, as well as she's a baker at Crumble Cookies. I like that one. Putting in 10 to 15 hours a week in addition to, you know, her stellar academics resume. So she's also the silver, she got the Silver Award at the National Spanish Exam, and she's committed over 100 hours of volunteer work at Smyrna Library, particularly focusing on the summer reading program. So thank you for all of those things. And this is Cheryl Lynn Morales Navore, and she's a graduate, will be a graduate of Smyrna High. She's going to go to MTSU and study mechatronics engineering. She's junior ROTC Battalion Commander, President, over 760 community service hours. And she's also on the Smyrna High Robotics Team Captain, and she's National Honor Society, Beta Club Student Council, and had time for a job, K&amp;J Cleaning Services for the last two and a half years. So as you can see, these guys are more accomplished than, you know, a lot of us at much older ages. So we are impressed with you, we're excited about your futures, we can't wait to see what you'll do, and just thank you for everything that you've done thus far and for having interest in this and expressing so articulately what it meant to have an opportunity to get this scholarship and to follow in the footsteps of a great American. So I can't wait to see what you guys are going to do. And this is our-
Janet or Landy, anything that you'd like to add?
Janet?
I'm just so proud of you guys. I'm going to cry, my heart is full. Thank you for everything everybody has done.
Congratulations to the three of you. It was an honor to read your essays and be a part of this whole epic thing. I mean, it's been a great time. Thank you so much, Mayor.
And I didn't tell you this, Landy's with the Blues, and Landy has become an honorary Town of Smyrna citizen. He is back here quite often. I think we may even get him back for the race in September. He's talking about coming back. So that's what's been so special about this entire process is getting to know new people and them becoming part of our community. So Landy and Janet, thanks for all you've done. I didn't tell you this in the beginning, each of these recipients will be receiving 20, 20, sorry, I wish, sorry, I wish, $2,000 each. And as soon as they graduate and we get their transcripts, but we do have the big check presentation to do. So council, if you don't mind joining behind us so we can get a quick photo? Here, so there's some that want anybody that needs one of those. Oh, they're still going. So one last thing, we were trying to think of something for the recipients that they could take and use and hopefully remember the Town of Smyrna and the scholarship. So we have you, your college backpack, and it's got a place for a laptop in there, and it also has the emblem for the Jeff Coos Scholarship. You guys are the first ones to receive these, so we wish you well in college, and we know that you're going to represent the Town of Smyrna and Janet and Michael Coos and Jeff well. So we really appreciate all you're doing. Thank you. You all are more than welcome to stay if you'd like to stay for the entire meeting, but if you would rather not stay, you're more than welcome to leave at this point, but I will leave that up to you all.
Thank you.
I'm sure you have some studying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Kelly, wait, one more thing, I almost forgot. Todd?
I forgot. Think about it, Todd, if you have the microphone, I forgot one thing, sorry. Sorry, I forgot.
Can I get $20,000?
Yes, $20,000. $20 bucks is all in you.
So I want you all to know a little bit about Kelly. Kelly's been at Brown's Chapel for 15 years, for the entire time as principal at Brown's Chapel. Before that, you were at Cedar Grove for how long?
Six.
Six years. Kelly's retiring this year. I am so excited for her, but I'm really sad for those teachers and those students at Brown's Chapel that, all of the lives that she has touched. So I just wanted to give Kelly some recognition for all that she does for not only her school and the kids that are in our community, but also for the Town of Smyrna. So I have a key to the city and the phone. So I just want to say thank you. Kelly was one of those first ones to step up right from the beginning and has put in so many hours, not only with the Jeff Coos Memorial, but with so many other things. So she will definitely be missed, but I know that she will be doing more volunteer work across our community. So at this time, we have some citizen comments before we move into our meeting. I just want to remind those that are going to speak, when you come up, if you'll just state your name, your address, and if you live inside the city limits of Smyrna, for Amber for the record, you'll get three minutes, and Amber will let you know when those three minutes are up. As we have people speaking, I just ask that we all be respectful, that we don't clap. If there's something you don't agree with, please don't shout out or any of that. Everybody's going to get their full three minutes, and then council will discuss it when it comes up in the meeting. So at this time, Ken Hill.
The joy of public speaking, right? All right. Good evening. My name is Ken Hill. Our home is at 5007 Rock Springs Road. We're on the corner of Rock Springs and Cook Lane. City council members, we're asking to please vote no on this proposed rezoning, Mabel Farms' rezoning request. Please stop the irresponsible development within the Rock Springs community. As citizens, we oppose the selling out of rural farmland, massive developments from big city developers such as City of Laverne has done, making it resemble the urban sprawl of Antioch. Please don't let the line of Smyrna from Laverne be further blurred as the Gwyn Farms' development has been done. The rezoning request does not represent the interests of the Rock Springs community. It is merely an attempt by a developer, century communities, to manipulate the rezoning process using the owners of Mabel Farms as proxies, just as they did in the Cooks Lane subdivision, where we will be surrounded by 145 homes behind us on Cooks Lane and 125 starter homes built on the side of us in Rock Springs. It is said, a property owner has a right to do with what they wish on their property. The developer and the owners who requested the rezoning will not be residing on the property in question, therefore their interests are purely financial. By selling the developer, the owners have requested the rezoning abandon their property and their community for sake of profit. A proxy is not a resident of the community, they are not invested in the issues of the community or care about the community, such as preserving the essence of the community. We are not anti-development. We believe in thoughtful development. That works in harmony with the adjacent properties and enhances the essence of the community. A gradual transition of development is more appropriate for the Mabel Farms acreage. Perhaps the building of one-acre properties, semi-custom homes on the Mabel Farms acreage would ease the transition from large acreage homes to the high-density homes in Gwyn Farms' subdivision. We know that Gwyn Farms' development was not built to the standards the town council was led to expect from its developer. Do you really believe the proposed development of Mabel Farms will be any different with the similar, with even smaller lot sizes than Gwyn Farms' subdivision? The day I drove through Gwyn Farms, it was so packed, people were parking on the grass, on their lawns. We live, we work, we vote in this town, developers do not. They are building less valuable, less desirable homes in our area, devaluing our homes, decimating our way of life. They do not live in the properties they purchased, and they are not your constituents. We are. Our voice matters, our concerns matter. We're asking you to vote no. This is Smyrna, not Laverne. Thank you.
And will you quickly state whether you live in the city limits, just for the record?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Right on the corner there.
Okay. Next, Dawn Hill.
My name is Dawn Hill. I live at 5007 Rock Springs Road, within the city limits or town limits. I'm speaking today in opposition to the rezoning request for Mabel Farms. My husband and I own the property located, the address I just gave you, which is considered by some to be a local landmark. Its previous owner was the former mayor of Smyrna, Paul Johns. We have spent the past several years lovingly maintaining and improving our home and property while contributing to the historical essence of the Smyrna Rock Springs community. The view from my kitchen window is of the Irvin Ancestral Home. It was clearly designed by Joy Irvin when she and Paul built our home to provide a view of the home she was born in and is a nod to her legacy. For me, it is a constant reminder, I'm protecting my family's 250-year legacy in Tennessee. The view perfectly mimics the great seal of the Town of Smyrna, which prominently depicts the historic Sam Davis home, displayed in a rural setting. It also mimics the Rock Springs community of Smyrna perfectly, a country setting with a historic home depicted. The ideal depicted on the seal of Smyrna is what Smyrna aspires to be, a modern town that honors the past by preserving the rural communities within and near our town limits. My husband and I are committed to preserving this landed community where the norm is custom estate homes on at least five-acre parcels, which we paid a premium to enjoy. We are not anti-development. However, the rezoning of Mabel Farm radically diverges from its historical use and, more importantly, radically changes the essence of our community to the detriment of its citizens. We were shocked to discover about a week ago that the current property owners are selling their property to century communities who intend to build 125 homes on the side of our property and 145 homes on the back of our property. As adjacent property owners, we were never consulted nor offered the option to purchase any of the land. We personally know investors who would be interested in purchasing Mabel Farms and Cooks Lane subdivision to maintain acreage parcels, thus preserving the rural feel of our community. A Facebook post by one of the Mabel Farms owners says, "Why do you think we are selling? Because we're being built all around our whole property. We don't care to go outside and see houses in every direction. Clearly, the owners are under the same duress as we are from the encroachment of Gwyn Farms' and Cooks Lane subdivisions. It's the reason we oppose Mabel Farms rezoning and the Cooks Lane subdivision. We feel we are being forced from our home by these developments. According to the proposed mobile farm, Mabel Farms' plan, my immediate neighbor would have 19 homes built along the length of her property, 19 homes. A typical subdivision homeowner would not be subjected to such blatant encroachment." I've been told the property owner has the right to do as they wish with their property. My question to you is, what property owner are we discussing? The owner who sold to a developer and has abandoned their property, or the adjacent property owners who are negatively impacted by the rezoning request? The owners of Mabel Farms are serving merely as proxies for a developer who proposes building 125 homes on a property that currently has three homes on it. I urge Mabel Farms owners to seek, to join us in seeking a solution that benefits everyone and does not unduly impose harmful encroachment on adjacent properties. Let's have a conversation as neighbors. City council members, please vote no on this rezoning request. We don't want to become like Laverne. We want the ideal that our town seal stands for, and I believe you do too. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Sandy Mahala? I'm sorry. Mah- Mahla. Mahla, thank you.
My name's Sandy Mahla. We live at 5428 Cooks Lane. It's within the city bounds.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a short speech here, request. We have lived at Cooks Lane for 26 years. When we purchased the property, there was a minimum five-acre lot. What drew us to the area are the beautiful rolling hills, the serenity, the cows, and the conveniences of the Town of Smyrna. So both the rural and the conveniences. What we want is programmed and thoughtful growth. It needs to be balanced with consideration for the past and the future. Going from one house on five-plus acres to three to 10 or more houses per acre is just very impactful on the schools, on the roads, on your ability to get out of the driveway, and for the peacefulness that we all enjoy and hope to continue to enjoy. The effects are just huge. The ability to have coffee on the back porch and hear the cows and the birds is now being greatly impacted by the noise and the construction. We don't wish to stop progress, but we wish for it to be thoughtful and planned. And we want it to be responsible. So while we own the property and we don't own the pieces next to us, we wish for Smyrna to keep the feel of the peacefulness and the rolling hills and for there to be some cows and birds and things. So what I'd like to close with is we would like you to consider changing the conditions of Mabel Farms. And I would like to close by saying, progress is the activity of today with the assurance for tomorrow, and we hope that that is considered.
Thank you so much. Okay, next is Lisa Reasonover.
My name's Lisa Reasonover. I live at 4821 Rock Springs Road, and I am in the city limits. In the last week, we discovered that the property adjacent to mine was up for rezoning from R1 to PRD. My husband and I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars purchasing our five-acre tract and building our home on the hill. We chose the location for the five-to-10-acre tracts with beautiful country estate homes. We love the views, the peacefulness, and the many different wildlife that roam our property. We put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into our home. The house was planned for us to retire in. It was going to be our final destination. For my husband, it was his final destination. He took his last breath in that house, surrounded by peace and comfort. This was his pride and joy and his legacy. It's now my legacy for my kids and my grandkids, and we want to continue to be good stewards of the land. Once it's gone, it's gone forever. It's gone. With that being said, I'm in opposition to the rezoning of Mabel Farms. The proposed development will impact me the most, with 19 small and less desirable homes on smaller lots slammed right up against my property, running parallel to my driveway, encroaching the view from every window in my house. It will run the entire length of my driveway to the end of my property line. That's 19 families, 19 lawn moors, 19 dogs, 19 backyard parties. I'm literally being pushed out of my peaceful way of life. The proposed Cooks Lane subdivision and the Mabel Farms rezoning plan increases nuisance noise and exponentially increases traffic along Rock Springs Road and Cooks Lane. To accommodate the increased traffic, my property and the adjacent property are going to be forced to give up acreage to widen both of the roads to four lanes. The encroachment of our properties is further aggravated by the road modifications that's going to remove the tree line that, that's the front of my house. Our schools and our buses and our roads are already over capacity. The proposed developments are decimating our way of life, devaluing our properties, and impeding the enjoyment of our way of life. I know that growth is inevitable. I'm not against growth, I just want it done in a way that's harmonious for everyone that's involved. I'm not here to point fingers or have hard feelings against my neighbors that have to do what they feel like they need to do, but I must stand up for my property and my investment and my way of life. And I ask that each of you make an informed decision for the good of the Rock Springs community, the Town of Smyrna, and all the citizens that are going to be impacted by the growth. Hear my pleas and put yourself in my shoes. How would you feel if your life investment was going from having one house and one neighbor to 19 houses, 19 neighbors, slammed right up against you? That's not an improvement for Smyrna or the Rock Springs community. It makes Smyrna look and feel more like Laverne or Antioch, when I think we should be striving to be more like Nolansville and Brentwood. And I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Susan Crutchfield.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak about the rezoning. I really just stand before you today, not just as an end of-
But Miss Crutchfield, if you'll, I'm sorry.
Susan Crutchfield, 5308 Cooks Lane, City.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thanks. Just really to, you know, several voices, for those of us who have paid taxes for, you know, me for 25 years. Our family moved here from Brentwood because we wanted to live in an environment that had covenants, restrictions, and limitations, to give us some of the protection from the urban sprawl. Those same covenants are things that you're opposing and trying to change that will significantly impact our life. Cooks Lane is a small community, really cherishes its identity and its character, and it was based upon the idea that what we purchased years ago would have that serene lifestyle that we were looking for and dreams for our children for generations. This rezoning certainly threatens to reshape the landscape of the community and the future for our children, which is a rural countryside, but with the benefits of living near Smyrna, Nolansville, Laverne, and Nashville. To address the infrastructure, it is unbelievable that the roads are not even maintained now. They're just patched, not paved, and that certainly is going to only just have a huge problem as we have more traffic. As everybody knows, Cooks Lane has a lot of steep banking, steep banks. I've had three accidents on my own property where people just have run off the road. Just the other day, it took me 21 seconds to exit my driveway, and this overburdening traffic is only going to increase, so the infrastructure is not really prepared. Milton and Archie Irvin, among a lot of the original farm owners, didn't envision this. That's who we bought our property from. They wanted the limitations, restrictions, and these enforcements, understanding that some of the property around there does not have those. Now, you're really disrupting, disrupting our dream for that for our children. And just Sunday, we were just enjoying the land, riding the golf carts, looking at the beautiful scenery, only then to have so many cars coming up and down. What's probably most concerning for me is the disregard, though, for those of us who have paid taxes. I would have appreciated, and I express this, that someone could have put a note in the mailbox or could have at least talked to us, who have been there for 25 years, about these upcoming subdivisions. But when I contacted them, because I heard from hearsay this was happening, I was really met with lack of information and just indifference. I even called to inquire- I even called to inquire about Gwyn Farms and any other future high-density housing considerations prior to me purchasing an additional twenty acres on top of what I have. That call yet again was met with indifference and just lack of information.
Three minutes, Mayor.
Last, if approved, this will also impact our property value. Thank you so much for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Stevens.
I live at forty-eight twenty-one Rock Springs Road. I've been here for twenty-nine years. I've been here my entire life. First and foremost, I want to be, I want to say I'm in opposition to Mabel Farms completely. It does not fit the aesthetic of Rock Springs community right now as we sit. I'm here to urge you guys to keep it R1 and not PRD. It's not ready for PRD yet. The roads aren't ready. The infrastructure out there is not ready for it. The community out here is completely in the dark about this. Like others have said, there has been no notification whatsoever. There is a sign about rezoning out there. It's about as big as this piece of paper. We're talking forty acres. And this happened just last week. It was requested to be rezoned in April fifteenth. Anyway, the planning, I'm going to go over planning now. Yeah, no signs were put out. The signs aren't proportionate. I don't think the town is being very transparent with their signs and notifications. And the planning seems to be happening way faster than it needs to be, especially in this area. Y'all have already approved rezoning for thousands of acres on Rocky Fork and Lee Road. It's already gone. It's all PRD. What we have right now in the R1 zones just needs to be kept. Why is this happening so fast? Why are we allowing all this open land to go so quickly? Why can't these plans and rezonings be done in a manner that spans over years and years with proper plans and blueprints, with proper communication to the citizens? Not a single person has even shown up in opposition or support in comments in the last four or five years on the agenda. What is going on in here? Nobody is in opposition of this? Thousands of acres of land being ripped up? This town has fifty thousand people in it, and not one person spoke up? That, that just smells really bad. The infrastructure hasn't been maintained out there, spotty patchwork on the roads. Adding all this is going to be detrimental to us. It's going to make it more dangerous. Where this kid's going to go to school? You know, all of these things. Schools are overcrowded. The buses are already full. And I want to be here to hold the, the mayor and everyone in, in this room accountable for, for what's going on. It seems to be we're getting robbed out of future generations to experience this opportunity to live in such restriction-free zones, not high-density housing. It's not ready for that. I mean, out here on Rock Springs Road, we've prided ourselves in the fact that we can farm, own animals, have gardens, experience agricultural living. Please do not allow such rezoning to happen out here past the church. Please. We can't fix what's already been done out here, but we can take measures to prevent it from happening any further out. It seems like the town is pushing for PRD all the way down. I mean, there, there's been five years of unaccounted.
Three minutes, Mayor.
Unaccounted for. I want to keep the R1s in place. Tennessee is about agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Smith?
I'm Mike Smith, and I live at five zero seven four Rock Springs Road here in Smyrna. I'm here to speak for voting no to the rezoning. To track the progress of this proposal, I used the Town of Smyrna website and decided that the Planning Commission might be the place to start. I soon realized that they don't seem to address the merits of the zoning change, but they handle all the technical requirements of assuring that a potential development is done correctly. Then I went to the town council. After all, they are the elected officials, as stated on the former government page of the website. Town council are the policymakers elected to represent the community and to concentrate on policy issues that are responsive to the needs of the community. I first started by reviewing the minutes and videos of the council workshop, thinking the workshop would be where issues would be discussed and debated so that they can become informed of the argument, both for and against the proposal, after all the merits of a proposal need to be resolved before a vote can be taken. Of course, the bigger questions are those that ask if we really need another subdivision, and does it make sense to open the development floodgates on what appears to me to be the last semi-rural area between Laverne, Nolansville, and Smyrna? As near as I can tell, this item for Mabel Farms was not discussed in the workshop, so I went back to look at the Cooks Lane proposal to see how things work, since I am relatively new to the area. The Planning Commission meeting on October fifth took eight minutes, most of which was the planning guy reading the list of open issues, then a little discussion of how great it was that this would give an outlet from Gwyn Farms to Cook Lane Road. They passed it up to the council. The council took five days later at their October ten meeting, apparently not needing to discuss the merits, at their workshop. It took four minutes, all being used by the planning guy reading the description. Two weeks later, a second reading was approved. Sometimes government can move at the speed of light. It should be noted that none of the meetings had public comments. It seems that the developer met the letter of the law when it came to notifying the public, but certainly not the intent, and started his relationship with the residents of the area as being another one of those real estate developers that play fast and loose with laws and regulations, then game the bureaucracy and the court system to get their intended outcome. So we are here today to decide another zoning request that would allow another section of semi-rural Smyrna to be paved over by about three houses per acre being developed by the same out-of-state, multi-billion-dollar developer doing Cooks Lane. They tried to pull the same engine notification game, but luckily I've got neighbors that happen to be alert to these things. This time, I hope to hear a robust and informative discussion containing facts and data as to why the Town of Smyrna should rezone to allow this to move forward. I encourage you to vote no after the full and thorough discussion as to why the zoning change should be made. As a second matter, I would like to see you add an item to next month's agenda to consider the rezoning of Cooks Lane to R1 so that we can, so that the merits of that addition can be discussed.
Three minutes, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, John Lewis?
I live on Cooks Lane, fifty-five thirty-four Cooks Lane. Appreciate the time to be able to speak. I am sorry to hear, you know, I was sorry to hear about the Gwyn Farms project that was approved. There's probably no one in that area that's more, going to be more impacted by the growth in that area. But the growth in that area is inevitable. It's going to come. It's either going to come now or it's going to come later. And the cost of land is getting so high that when we look at high density, high density with three lots per acre is probably not that much. I mean, you can look at different areas of our community in middle Tennessee, and there's areas that high density is much, much higher than that per acre. I don't like this. I have almost a hundred acres and a, a home that has almost eleven thousand square feet. I'm going to be impacted from a valuation standpoint as much as anybody. But I can't stand here in good conscience and say that I oppose this developer committed into doing this. In nineteen seventy-eight, my wife and I came into this community, and the hallmark of this community has always been to provide affordable housing for families. It's the American dream to have a home, to have a place to live. The cost of land is going up. Homeownership can only be afforded by people who have the ability to come into communities that support middle-class people that, and, and I get the fact that we're in an area that is just absolutely beautiful and pristine, but that area is going to be developed. I don't, right now, have anything going on in my property. I hate the fact that when I drive down my driveway, it's beautiful. But I know that at some point in the future, it's going to change. My children or the other people that have spokeschildren, at some point, that property is going to be developed. And when we talk about high density, three acres, or three lots per acre is not that bad. You know, not from my vantage point. In ten years, we might pray and, and wish that this would have occurred today and that the zoning had occurred rather than it be turned down. And as far as I know, Cooks Lane has already got a subdivision that's been approved on. So that's not something that can go back and be retracked at this point. I don't know. But for me, I think that this council, the councils before you, have done a remarkable job at planning.
Three minutes, Mayor.
And, and I hope that you guys will continue to do the job that you've always done. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Lewis? Timothy Sanders?
Good evening, Mayor, and distinguished members of this council. My name is Tim Sanders, and I've lived in Smyrna over twenty years at five thousand three Mary Ellen Circle. It's a Potts Crossing subdivision.
Five thousand three?
Five thousand three.
Say the street name again?
Excuse me?
The street name again?
Tim Sanders.
No, 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 your street name.
Mary Ellen Circle.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak at this open forum. I would, for it also like me knowing, I live in the epicenter of this Rock Springs Road debate. While I don't have a defining opinion on the outcome of these proceedings, I am here because I've been asked to speak for the Morgan family, Ms. Mabel Catherine Morgan in particular. Ms. Morgan is a matriarch of this family and is the majority landowner at Mabel Farms. It is my hope by conveying the Morgan family's wishes and words that a clear light can be shed on their situation and dispel rumors with truths. In order to do so, I want to present facts and explain unknown variables that have led the Morgan family to their decisions, and by doing so, hopefully enlighten all that are opposed to the rezoning. Ms. Mabel, along with her family, have lived at Mabel Farms for forty-two years, long before other subdivisions such as Woodmont, Potts Crossing, The Vineyards, and recently Gwyn Farms ever popped up along Rock Springs Road. And even with all the change, never once has Ms. Mabel had any desire to live anywhere except Mabel Farms. But sometimes we don't get to dictate what happens in our lives. Unfortunately, due to recent illness and mounting hospital stays for the last few months, times have turned for this eighty-seven-year-old lady, and it's become a worrisome financial burden to her to maintain property taxes and pay expenses involved in order for her to maintain the upkeep of the property. I want to reiterate and make it clear. Ms. Morgan has never wanted to live anywhere except Mabel Farms. Ms. Morgan has never once solicited anyone, including developers, with any interest of selling her farm. But now, one developer has approached her, Century Homes Communities, and they have done so in a precarious time, causing her to evaluate her current situation and the possible future for her family. The troubling part of this story is that while caught in this stressful situation, not one of her neighbors took time to approach Ms. Morgan and ask her, hey, what's going on? Or tried to see if there's anything they could do to help. They just, after hearing the request for rezoning, decided that a good old-fashioned social media slandering mixed with personal harassment and intimidation was the way to go. And just so those of you that oppose this rezoning and are present know, one individual in your group has taken matters to the limit of lawlessness by driving by the Morgan residence on several occasions, honking the horn and shouting obscenities at an eighty-seven-year-old woman. That same individual also took an opportunity to circle with his own vehicle, Ms. Mabel's son Joe, as Joe sat in his vehicle in the Rock Springs Road Church of Christ parking lot reading his mail. These actions are just cowardly, uncalled-for, and very much unappreciated.
Three minutes, Mayor. Thank you, sir. Joe Morgan? John Morgan? Joshua Miller? Trey Woodruff?
Councilmembers, my name is Trey Woodruff. I live at fifteen oh two Sugarwood Drive, not in the city limits. I represent Century Communities. I'm the vice president of land there, and more than anything, we wanted the opportunity just to continue to reiterate that we're happy to work with the council, and anything that you find to be a reasonable request that we can help to satisfy, to be a good neighbor, to be, you know, responsive to you guys and what you want as you see fit. We do look at the Mabel Farms and the Cooks Lane project as part of the urban growth that was already planned by this council, and we just continue to just reach out and say to neighbors as well, we're, we're an open door. We're ready to be friendly, neighborly, and help any way we can. And that's it for now. The rest we can help to answer during the later parts of the agenda.
Thank you. Kyle Griffin?
Good evening. My name is Kyle Griffin with CSDG, engineer of record on this property address at twenty-three oh five Klein Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee. I just wanted to talk about some of the technical components of this site. We have done our due diligence. We have checked for environmental. We have done transportation studies ahead of schedule. Usually that comes at a pre-plat. We actually did that in conjunction with the Cooks Lane project. We will continue to work with staff to alleviate traffic concerns. We are coordinating with them right now on Cooks to realign the sharp curves and giving up part of our property to do so. I expect no change in the, in the tone for this development. Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes our citizens' comments. So at this point, I will call our meeting to order, and I will ask Chaplain Jim Hunt to, of the Smyrna Police Department, to come forward to do our prayer. And our pledge tonight will be done by Assistant Town Manager Todd Spearman. If you'll all stand with us, please.
Let's go to our God and Father. Our great God and Father in heaven, we humbly come before your throne, thanking you for being the great God that cares about each one of us. Thank you for loving us, thanking you for caring for us, thanking you for giving us this beautiful world that we get to live in, that we get to enjoy, that we get to see as we grow through this life and as we walk through this life with each other. Father, we ask that you be with us as we walk through the struggles of this life, the things that sometimes cause chaos, sometimes cause joy. Help us to find a way to cause them all joy so that we may be united in front of you. Father, we tonight celebrate with Carlos Leon, Sherilyn Morales Navore, and Emma Gray. Father, we're thankful that they got those scholarships, but more than that, we pray for their future success in the endeavors that they're going to pursue for the rest of their lives. We thank you for the Coos family and for those who are supporting that scholarship and supporting the students in our community through that, but also remembering the lives of service that always support us. And along with that, Father, we thank you for those who protect and serve behind the badge, whether it be from the fire department or the police department, but also our council members, our mayor, and the others in their offices, and those who serve behind the scenes that are unseen but in humble ways serve our community. We're so thankful for each and every one of them. Father, we want to do the things that are glory to you, and we always want to give you the praise in each of our lives. It's through Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Thank you, Todd. Ms. Amber, if you'll do roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Peebles?
Here.
Councilman Cole?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morrell?
Present.
Councilman Short?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Reed?
Here.
We'll move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the April ninth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting, the April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four workshop meeting, and the May sixth, twenty-twenty-four special call meeting of the town council. Counselor, if any additions or corrections that need...
Counselor, are there any additions or corrections that need to be made? Seeing none, do I have a mo... Oh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Correspondents and communication, Amber, Jeff, anything from you all tonight? I did receive a card from Jimmy Carney, who is with our Parks Department, whose wife passed away. He said, "Thank you in the town of Smyrna for the beautiful throw. Thelma would have loved it. Thanks also for your prayers for the family. I'm so thankful to work for this town." Jimmy Carney. So continued prayers to the Carney family on Jimmy's loss of his wife. Any awards and recognitions other than the ones we've already done?
Amen.
Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda. These are items that are determined by our town manager to be routine items and not necessarily needing individual discussion. I do like to read these so those that are in the audience, as well as those that are at home, know what we're voting on. And if there's an item that council would like to pull off and discuss or vote on individually, we can do that. So item A is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal with Azteca Systems LLC, City Works for the Building Department software. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the barn store to construct a metal storage building at Sharp Springs Park. Item C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with NAFCO for the fire department turnout gear. Item D, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number six and change order number eight with Cleary Construction for the Genie Lane Extension Project. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with SNW Contracting Company LLC for the installation of seven streetlights on the Genie Lane Extension Project. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with SNW Contracting to install pedestrian signals at the intersection of Sam Ridley and Weekly Lane. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a change order with TTL for testing services associated with Fire Hall Four. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract extension for the 2024-2025 with various vendors for chemicals for the water and wastewater treatment plants. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract extension with J&amp;B Tanker for the water treatment plant lagoon sludge removal. Item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract extension with IMNE for mechanical maintenance at the water and wastewater treatment plants for 2024 through 2025. Item K is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the 2024-2025 annual bid contracts for chemicals for the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. Item L is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Dan Weaver for the water system leak survey. Item M is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with BH Homes for emergency water line replacements. Item N is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Audit Services for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. And item O is approval of the Town of Smyrna Classification and Compensation Plan for the fiscal year 2024-2025. Counsel, are there any questions about an item on the consent agenda?
I have...I do have a question.
Which item?
On G.
Okay, then we'll pull G off and discuss that individually. Is there any other question about an item?
I don't want to necessarily pull off. I do have a question. The compensation plan, is that Rex or...I don't know which director submitted it.
Jeff Gray.
So the question is, I can't tell based on what's submitted. Was there any adjustments to that plan? Or is that just re-adopting the existing plan?
There may be some readjustments that you find before the first and second reading.
Okay, all right. Because, yeah, the document that's in there is dated last year, so I didn't know if there was adjustments or not.
Yes, and we'll send those out obviously before then, but you may see those.
Okay, perfect.
So as of now, it's the same one from last year. There haven't been any adjustments, but there could be between this reading and the next. Is that...okay.
But we'll send that obviously before that meeting. They'll send it to you if there are any.
Did you want to...do you want to pull G off? Or you just have a question?
I just have a question, actually.
Okay.
So on the contract, it says this is for masonry work that is...has been extended for longer than the 30 days. We thought it was going to be...it's now 60.
This is Tom's project, and he isn't able to be here tonight. I'm not sure of the specifics of that. But it is for...they're the testing service that do all the concrete and material testing for the project, so.
That's what I was trying to understand. What is the testing versus the actual masonry, the work?
Sorry, I don't know right off. I don't know the details. Yeah, Thompson's unable to be here. But it's mainly they're just making sure all materials and all masonry meet codes and standards.
Okay, so is...okay.
And they have to be on site.
Can you...can you...
Thank you.
It's my understanding, Councilman, that they have to be on site. When the pouring's done, that's when they check the concrete for the PSI and the work that's being poured.
Okay.
And they're only doing the testing, not the actual work in sales?
Right, right. They're just, like I said, on that, on the mortar. Like I said, they'll do all the density, air quantities, and materials and slump for on-site as it's coming out of the truck. So that's what that part is for, yes.
If I'm reading it right, it looks like those five items that are being listed were supposed to be done, they're not, by other contractors. Because they're not done, they've got to extend their contract to still be on-site while theirs is getting completed.
That's what I was trying to understand. Because I knew when we talked about it at the workshop, we talked about the fact that the masonry work and all needed to be done. But when it was saying testing, I wasn't following.
Yeah, like core test examples, like to check the density of the concrete.
Okay, okay.
Other questions? Okay, seeing...thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no others, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
A motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll now move on to old business. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, part of parcel 58.00, to amend the approved PRD requested by Matt Huff. The property requested to be rezoned contains 18.93 acres and is located west of Fortitude Trail. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is an existing approved PRD that has been requested to be amended. It is, as you stated, west of Fortitude Trail, north of the Woodmont Development. This land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Stranging zones are a mix of R3 and then a couple of PRDs, Woodmont and Colony Estates at Green Tree. The existing approved PRD is for 70 single-family lots. The requested amendment would remove 4.2 acres from that PRD and reduce the number of lots to 60. This does increase the density slightly from 3.03 to 3.17 houses per acre. There is a change in the proposed amenities a little bit, but all other aspects of the approved PRD do remain the same. This request and the next request on your agenda from Rob Mulchan are in tandem with one another. Would result in a better overall road layout for the area as it does a limited kind of cul-de-sac and add another connection to these...so that neighbors are better connected together. And the Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? We talked about this in regards to better flow between the developments. Any questions or comments for Kevin on this? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Motion to approve?
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have a question, actually. As I'm looking at the map, at the bottom of Colony Estates, there is a road, but at the PRD to the west, there is a circle cul-de-sac.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, that's...yeah, that's the...that's a future street in Woodmont. It was approved with a cul-de-sac on it when that came through because the existing approved PRD on Colony Estates did not have a road connection there. So that's why that cul-de-sac was shown. That would have to...would change a little bit. There would still be a road there, the cul-de-sac would get eliminated, and it would just be a connection into Colony Estates.
That's what I wanted to know. Was it going to actually connect?
Yes.
Kevin, in this... Couple of spots listed as stormwater. Will they hold water? Will they be usable green space?
I don't...I don't believe...I don't know that it's the...
Guess there's four.
That they're designed to be permanent ponds. No, I don't think that's the case. It's my understanding, anyway. I'm not...
But the HOA will keep those up?
Would have to maintain them, yes.
I have a question. I have a question off of his question. So since those are not usable green spa...those are not usable green space areas, does it still meet the requirements for green space?
Yeah, the area that's in the middle, kind of that central... I'm sorry. I'm looking at the next one, Colony Estates. I apologize for that. Yeah, it's that there is an area kind of at the...kind of where the connection to the south here, Garvel Avenue, there's a... That's where their amenities would actually be located. There's also some walking trails through some of those areas as well. They're kind of hard to see at this scale in some of those wooded areas. So we have more direct connection from...at least pedestrian connection from some of those southernmost areas up to that amenity area. But yes, they do meet our requirements. For us to be approved open space.
Other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Our second public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, parcel 58.01, and part of parcel 58.00, to amend the approved PRD requested by Rob Mulchan. The properties requested to be rezoned contain approximately 37.68 acres and are located on Ryan Hill Drive. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council. These are...these parcels, one parcel and part of another parcel are south of Ryan Hill Drive, east of Skinner Drive. Again, medium-density, single-family residential is the land use policy here. Stranging zones are a mix of R1, R3, and then the PRD of Woodmont and Burnett Ridge. This existing approved PRD has been through a couple of iterations. The most recent approved iteration was for 11 single-family lots. The amendment would add the 4.2 acres that was discussed for Burnett Ridge to this PRD, which is shown on the map, kind of that triangular area property. And then would be for the overall total would be 113 single-family lots, which does increase the density, obviously, from 11 or 0.33 houses per acre to just under three. Houses would have a minimum of 1,600 square feet of living area. Would be finished with a mix of brick, stone, and concrete siding, have two car garages. Again, they do meet all of our requirements as far as parking and setbacks and open space and all those requirements we have for PRDs. This would extend Ryan Hill Drive through the site to connect to Burnett Ridge, as well as an extension of Skinner Drive through the site. And then again, that...the mention of the Millgate Drive connection that we just talked about. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, the adjoining R3, area that's R3, how many homes are typically do you see per acre on an R3?
Typically, it's about three per acre. You have those...that's a 10,000 square foot lot size. So that's kind of the...that would kind of be the most, most likely.
What amenities are required for an R3 development?
The only thing...there's no open space required. Typically, you do have some open space for the detention areas because those usually are common areas. But as far as any parks or playgrounds or anything like that, there would not be anything required of a development. They could certainly still do that, but it would not be required.
What building materials are required in an R3?
We don't have anything.
Other questions or comments?
So the survey, has it just not been updated because the acreage says 33.36 rather than the 37.68?
That is the current property. The 4.2 acres is that triangular area is the account. And that makes up the difference. So we're...would the previous action remove that PRD, that portion of the property from Burnett Ridge, and this would add it back, add that to the Colony Green Tree? So that's where you get the 37.68 acres total.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. If you'll come forward, if you'll state your name, your address, and if you live in the city limits.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jack Clausen. I reside at 5420 Maple Creek Drive in Smyrna, part of the Woodmont complex. I wasn't aware of this one. I was more here because I'd heard about Rocky Springs. But I want to just say, I moved here in 2016 with my family from California. When I first arrived in California in 1967 as a Marine, there were all sorts of agriculture in Orange County, California. Today, they refer to Irvine, in the heart of Orange County, as a Disneyland city. You can walk by, and there'll be open area in one week, and the next week, it's all fully planted trees and flowers and grass. Now, I first moved, when we got here in 2016, to Murfreesboro because I wanted to be out in the country. And I got just outside the city limits. And then I found out the year after, 700 new homes went across 41 from us by Mount Tabor Road. When we moved there to Smyrna, it was because we needed to get closer to the grandkids and my daughter, and they're in Nolansville. And driving from south Murfreesboro to Nolansville or Arrington or any of those areas, it's like a 40-minute drive. I have seen California, and you folks are doing the same thing they did. You're following the money, and you're not taking care of the infrastructure. Your roads are miserable. Highway 24, Interstate 24, is blocked up all the time. You've got too much going on. You need to slow it down. Listen to these people who are there because the developers aren't going to have to worry about it. They need schools, you need roads, you need hospitals, you need police and fire support. Your fire department gets kudos, as far as I'm concerned, for dealing with the problems they have to. You need to think about all the things that are related to the cost of these developments that you, as a citizen and a city, are going to have to take care of. The developer is not going to provide fire protection. They're not going to provide police protection. They're not going to hire the EMTs. You folks are going to have to do that. So think about it before you make all this rapid destruction because I'm in Woodmont right now, and the only reason I'm there is because it's the only place I could find that I could afford and still be close to my family. You talk about low-income housing? These aren't low-income houses. My house cost $487,000 last October. It...think about it, folks. You've got a big responsibility here. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, anyone else to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion? Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can I have a second? I'm sorry.
Oh, Tim, sorry. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have new business tonight. Our Planning Commission report. Our first item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map 73, parcel 16.01, 16.02, and 17.00, requested by Kyle Griffin with CSDG on behalf of Delory D. and Teresa Els. Parcel 16.01, 16.02, and 17.00 requested by Kyle Griffin with CSDG on behalf of Delary D. and Teresa Els-Salvills, the First Baptist Church, uh, and First Baptist Church of Smyrna, Tennessee, containing 109.65 acres. The properties are located at 5,100 Ammival Road and 7,441 Rocky Fork Ammival Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an annexation request, uh, along with a zoning request. There's three tracts of land. They are, uh, have fronted on Rocky Fork Ammival Road and Ammival Road, uh, kind of on about 400 feet south of the intersection of Ammival Road, of those two streets, and about 1,400 feet west of that intersection. Again, medium density development, this is, or single-family residential development is what is supported by the land use plan in this area. Surrounding zoning, there's a couple of PRDs in town of Riley Downs and Linwood, uh, and RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation except for water, which would be provided by the Salty Utility District, which has issued a will serve letter regarding offsite improvements that would be necessary, necessary to meet fire flow requirements. In addition to the requested properties, staff did recommend the annexation of approximately 2,230 linear feet of the existing right-of-way Rocky Fork Ammival Road from the current town limits to Ammival Road, State Route 102. This proposed PRD, um, there's two or three things going on with it. First, uh, there's about 27 villas or duplexes that are, which would total 54 units and 166 single-family lots. These would be age restricted. Then there would be an additional 898, just, uh, single-family lots that would not be age restricted. So it would be 318 residences.
Say that one more time, I just didn't hear you.
Yeah, yeah, there's, the first two numbers are age restricted.
Okay.
There were, and there would be an additional 98, single-family lots that would not be age restricted.
Okay.
Uh, so a total of 318 residences on 95.65 acres. The remaining 14 acres would be zoned R1, is the location of Life Point Church, Stewart Creek. Access would be from Rocky Fork Ammival Road and the adjoining Riley Downs Development for the age-restricted portion of the development. And from Ammival Road, Drew Street, and the adjacent Riley Downs and Linwood Developments for the 98 non-age-restricted lots. Uh, the streets within the age-restricted area would be private. There would be a gate at the entrance from Rocky Fork Ammival Road. And all requirements of the town with regard to open space parking and setbacks would be met. Uh, the planning commission did recommend approval. There were a few conditions. One, the traffic study is required. Uh, any improvements recommended by that study would, would have to be completed by the developer. Informational comments regarding minimum fire flow at 1,000 gallons per minute, 20 PSI, and might have to be more for the, the amenity buildings that are proposed. Uh, and this development will require a supplemental for flip lane development permit, because there is a small area of flip lane in this area. So, uh, with those conditions, staff would recommend approval.
Questions and comments for Kevin on this development?
Mayor, I just want to say, this is, uh, I'm a pretty proud member of Life Point Church now for going on close to 30 years. This is my church. They've entrusted me to, to help them with this. So I'm going to find this as a conflict and bow out of any discussion or any vote on this product.
Thank you. Council questions on this one?
Kevin, the, um, what is, I think, what, 315 different? Is that about what did he ask?
318.
318.
318.
And you talk about doing the traffic study. How far, I mean, if this doesn't have an effect right in that area, but could possibly have an effect downstream, closer to the Ammival Road, Interstate and all that. When they do the traffic study, how far do they actually look that this is going to have an effect on and not just necessarily in that area?
Yeah, we, typically, it's, our city engineer usually sits down with whoever the traffic engineer is on the project and kind of looks at that and kind of scopes out the intersections that will be doing, that will need to be looked at and the, kind of the, the area, how large the area needs to be. Obviously, it depends on the size of the development. Some developments that would not have as much traffic generated, would not have as much, much of an area, something like, you know, this one with 318 homes, that's a pretty large one, obviously. So, um, so let's look at, exactly, that scope, we haven't, that hasn't happened yet. So exactly what will be looked at here, I don't know. Certainly, the, the main intersection there, Rocky Fork Ammival and Ammival would be Rocky Fork Ammival Road is obviously going to be at the very front of this. How far north and south do you go along Ammival Road? We have some parameters in our zoning ordinance that kind of talks about, you know, again, the level, the amount of traffic that would be generated from a development, kind of how far that goes.
The consultant doing the traffic study has contacted me, and we've worked out that there will be, you know, the intersections there, Rocky Fork Ammival and Drew Street and Stone Street down there also, Burton Knob, all the way out, uh, Ocala, and even that, looking at the interchange at I-840 for signing and possible lighting upgrades there. So we're running that all the way back and then all the way back up to One Mile Lane. So we're running that far of distance on each side of it.
Okay, so that's the, um, that's the traffic light there at One Mile Lane, is that correct?
Correct.
So you, because, I mean.
We're going up to that, which, after the ITS, that's going to be working on to our Traffic Operations Center, so we can manage the phasing of that signal here, which that project should be done by the end of the year. So it will be online at that time that we can work the phasing there, and also at Seminary Popular Wood.
Yeah, because we know we've got issues there.
Yeah, right. Uh, once the ITS, once those become hooked into our control center, and we can work those from operations center, not have to manually, uh, manually retime those signals. But we are looking from there all the way out to I-840 on, uh, the traffic study for this development.
Would the study be back before second reading?
I don't, not sure.
I don't know that. I don't know if they've counted traffic yet or not. They took, we, we would like them to count traffic when school is in session. So I don't know if they've done that yet or not.
So then it wouldn't be ready, since school's about to be out in a week?
School's about to be out, yeah. So if it hasn't already happened, then they wouldn't be able to till August, September.
But even as they do their traffic counts, it still takes time to run each intersection, all the turning movements with the background traffic data, and doing their projection traffic on each intersection.
Well, they're obligated to implement the improvements that the traffic study finds, correct?
Correct. If, whatever the traffic study says about each intersection that they study, whether it be addition of turn lanes, uh, signalization, or signing, uh, anything of that nature, that they will be required to, to do.
I think one thing to consider about this is that, you know, this is, for the most part, age restricted. You've got 27 villas, and you've got 166 single-family lots that are all age restricted. So that's 55 and older. So from what you think about the typical traffic plan, as far as kids going to school, people going to work and whatnot, it's going to be much softer here with that. Plus, uh, you know, the, uh, the remaining homes that are not age restricted, it, it almost speaks to the gentleman who spoke just a minute ago, as far as generational living. You know, if you have, uh, uh, your daughter and grandchildren in, in one section of it, and then you're in a gated area in, in the second of it, it's a walk there. So that was something that the commission considered when we looked at that, as far as what type of, would this impact traffic in a normal pattern where you have, you know, working, uh, families? Or would it be different? And, you know, it's, it's different. We've seen a huge demand for the 55 and older homes for, for our seniors. And if you look at the amenities that are included here, the swimming pool, uh, pickleball, uh, bocce ball, nature trails, uh, park space, about nine acres of this is dedicated for the residents here. So, uh, again, when we require a, a traffic study, what the traffic study says has to be implemented, period, end of story.
Yeah, when I, when I'm looking at this development, one of the things that I always look at, um, even though it's not always factored in to the number, I always look at the amount of unused open space. And in this case, there's about 18 acres that's going to be, it's 29 acres that's open space. 11 of it is going to be used for amenities. So it's about 18 acres out of the 97 that can't be built on, won't be usable land. Uh, if this was just simply a PRD, single-family homes, I, that would be, that would cause me concern, because that gets the ratio much higher, uh, per acre, because there are so many 55 and over. And because the 55 and over is going to generally have, uh, less school-aged children, they're going to have less traffic in and out. And since this is in the county currently, right? So if, if we didn't, if we, if we don't work with the developer, bring something in that we can kind of get some of these softer nuances of, they could just go develop it out in the county, um, well, to, however they wanted to, really. I mean, however the county would approve it. And that, that gives us, that's a lot of the discussion when we look at this, is what can they do if we don't act? If we say no and tell them that we, we're not willing to work with them or work in a program with them, then what can they do without it? In this case, there's a lot they can do. One of the members mentioned, they have 19 homes that'll be going down their property. My parents live on Burton Knob Road, and they have 23 homes that line their property. That, that whole subdivision is in the county, and that's what can happen on property in the county. The same exact thing. The question is, is whether or not we, uh, can get some amenities or get some development cues in place to help make that more sustainable, right? So I feel that pain. My parents own six acres, that's exactly the same way. But the city didn't have anything to do with it. If we had had the opportunity to annex that, we may be able to soften that, we don't know. But the 55 and over, to me, makes this digestible.
So was that requested? I don't even know how to ask the question. It makes it digestible, but I'm still, I still have some concerns, because we have citizens who have concerns. And I guess my question is, was it presented that way in order to make it palatable?
No, I mean, there was absolutely no evidence of whatsoever. I mean, this wasn't brought to us as, uh, a, a different type of PRD. And then, uh, the commission met and expressed some concern, and then it was changed. I'm not quite sure where you, you're coming from there.
No, not that it was changed, but they were willing to, to do the 55 and up, because they were going to also get the 98 for the, not for any type of living. So that's, I didn't know if there were discussions about that part or not, so I'm asking.
No. This would be more along the lines of what the market was asking for. So they came in with the 55, because that's what the market demanded.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. But I have a, I have a question. It's kind of hard to tell on that right there, but on ours, you can tell the difference that the, the bottom two rows of houses, the ones on the left are pink, the ones on the right are blue. What is, uh, the differentiation between those two? Is there any?
I think that's just a little bit different lot width. I think the blue ones are maybe a little bit smaller.
Yeah, they said in the pattern book, 45-foot versus 55-foot. I think that's the difference in those two lots. I don't know which is which, but.
They're, they're all, and they're all, they're all single-family detached.
They're single-family.
Yeah.
But they're not age restricted, are they?
Those are the, those, those are the two rows that are not age restricted, yes.
And they have no, uh, access to the upper part of the development? It looks like the only access, actually initially, will be to Ammival Road.
That's, that's correct. Yeah, the, the, the.
So would those people not be, um, have access to the, to the, to the amenities of the, uh, development?
I don't know about the amenities piece of it. I know that the, the access, as far as the traffic access, is being limited because the idea is that the age-restricted area would have a gate over it and be private streets. And so that was the reason why there's no road connection there. As far as would they have access, would they still be part of an HOA that maybe still has an access with, through pedestrian connections or something to, to utilize the amenities that are in there? That's the question.
So we don't know?
The developer might can answer. I don't know that answer, sir.
I noticed that the, uh, roads in the upper portion of it are all private, and that one is a public road.
Correct.
Is there reasoning for that? Just, uh?
I think that's more of a, it's going to kind of connect to the Linwood Development and Riley Downs and, and then eventually Ammival Road as well directly. And I think it's just more in keeping with those developments that are there.
Kevin, across from where it says R1, I know there's some, I think, some really, a nice subdivision across from there. Is that in the city or is that in the county?
It's in the county.
Okay.
Isn't that Stonewood?
Um, I think that's part of Stonewood potentially, yeah. Or there's another, or there's another one that's not Stonewood, it's a different name.
And those would probably, what's the county's equivalent to, um, is that like an R1 as well, or?
I don't know what that development is. I know this property and most of the surrounding properties that are in the county here is zoned RM, which is equivalent to our R1.
Okay.
I don't know what that particular development is on.
I've been through that situation.
I think it's RM, but I'm not 100% sure.
These side setbacks are seven and a half, is that correct?
Yes.
That's the minimum.
That's the minimum, yeah.
Yeah, some of the lots have larger, the, the ones in the 55 and over have a little bit larger. I was looking at that same thing.
Charles, in regards to the road itself, are there things that concern you that might not be, or could be in the traffic study, that we might need to be thinking about in regards not only to Rocky, where is in front of their property, but anywhere else?
No, mainly, uh, like Burton Knob, but that will also be the Linwood, that they're going to make major improvements to that intersection also. So mainly just where they connect in, I think it's Drew Street and the other, uh, street down there that they'll be looking at, because this is more internal than any exterior road connections. We are going to annex that last portion of Rocky Fork Ammival from State Route 102, Ammival Road, up to our current city limit to make that contiguous, uh, section there.
Okay. Council, other questions?
So is this one of the properties where the, the, the citizens have spoken about, where they said that they had no discussion, or the developer never reached out to them? Or they've never, they've not had a chance to talk to the developer at all? Is this the same property?
No, I think that's, that's the next one.
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
Okay.
Yep.
So has anyone contacted you about this property?
I have not had any contacts, though. And the signs have been put up as well. But I have not had any contacts from neighbors. Most of the neighboring properties are.
New developments?
Are new developments, or about to be developed, so.
Has anybody else had contact about this property? Other questions?
I have a question?
No.
Sorry, yeah, if you want to come back next month, if it passes, then there'll be a public comment at that point. Other comments or questions? Okay, do, um, I have a motion.
Going to make a motion to approve?
A motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Raquel and who else?
Jerry.
Raquel and Raquel, Jerry. Me also.
Okay.
Do you need?
All right.
Do you need roll call?
So that's two, three, and one, yeah?
Okay, so if you'll do roll call.
Okay. Um, Councilwoman Peoples?
Opposed.
Councilman Cole?
No.
Councilman Morrell?
Yes.
Councilman Short?
No.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adkins, you're abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. And Mayor Reed?
Yes.
And that's three and three.
Three and three. Got to have a positive number.
Did not, not have this happen, so what do we need to do?
Well, you can either defer it or keep voting until you get to. Well, you can either defer it or keep voting until you get to a positive number, one way or the other.
I'll make a motion to defer.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. A motion and a second to defer. Any comments?
What, what would you be, what information additional would you be looking for, or...
You know, I'm not... What I would really like to see happen is something that I don't, I don't think can happen before next month, but I, I would like to see us revisit our guidelines on our PRDs. You know, we, we don't have restriction, as Tim went through a few minutes ago, there's not certain restrictions that you're going to get when it's in a straight zoning situation. But we do have certain guidelines, which we have applied to our PRDs. And over the years, I'm gonna tell you something, I think that they've been very effective, and it's been things which make a big difference in the way our communities look. Requiring the driveways to have four, four, space for four vehicles out front. Requiring the construction material to be either brick, stone, or concrete siding, party board, I guess it's called. And I don't know, I think that one of the things I'd really like to see is possibly increase the, oh, the side setbacks also, the side setbacks have been added to this also. And I'd like to see us revisit, you know, some of those items, such as the percent of stone or brick as opposed to the, to the siding. There you have it.
Okay. So to do that, to do that, it's probably gonna take a special call meeting to do that, not something that we probably can do in a workshop, and probably not something that can be done within a thirty-day, I mean, before this would come back in thirty days.
And, and you know, kind of resolved to the fact that this one, I would probably vote for it next time when it comes in, because it's, it's that far down the pipeline. It meets the guidelines which we have laid out for them before, and, you know, it wouldn't be fair for them, to them to, to force to turn that down, because it is, there's, there's not a, an item in there which I would call a deal breaker, if you will.
It does meet our PRD requirements, Kevin.
Yeah, the curves, yeah.
It does. But, and my concern is more the density of this, that the ninety-eight homes that have no restrictions on them are packed in there, whereas the, the ones with the restrictions are bigger.
Let me ask you a question, Kevin. If you were to take that lower section below the triangle that has PRD in it, and you mark off one square acre, can you tell me how many homes that would have in it? And I apologize, usually when I'm gonna ask Kevin a question like that, I'll call him beforehand, because it's...
Kevin, I did the math by taking out the open space, and it came to four point one-four for the whole complex. But that's not just the bottom part.
Yeah.
And I've looked at those lot sizes, they're seven and a half feet on each side, which is fifteen feet between houses, and the required, they're basically the required setbacks. That's the minimum required setbacks is what that bottom section is.
I mean, they're, those are probably fifty-five, hundred, six thousand square foot lots, be my guess. Just, that's a guess. On the pink ones, maybe a little bit smaller on the blue, because they're a little bit more narrow. So you would have eight, something like that. If you didn't count, if you just went more of a rectangle of your acre and didn't count the roadway.
I guess that's, you know, one of the things I wanna visit in the PRD is the simple fact that, and Steve's alluded to it already, and I've talked about it before, is that sometimes a density doesn't pencil out to be what we perceive it to be because of the unused space. We've had a couple of subdivisions that came in, it had some really extreme examples of that, where the, the property was completely unusable, because it went straight up. But by the same token, it was counted in, the square footage for the entire development.
So I wanna come back and revisit a meeting discussing that.
Sorry about that.
No, you're okay. And so we have a motion and a second on the floor to defer. Jeff, do we have to put a time limit on that in regards to deferring?
I would appreciate it if you would.
I guess, I've got a question, and I don't, I don't know if I can ask this question or not.
Who seconded it?
I did, but...
Would you withdraw that second?
That's where I was going.
Okay, and I'll withdraw that motion.
I would draw my second of that defer motion. And then make a motion that we vote again for approval of this development.
HD, did you withdraw your motion?
I did. I made my point, what can I say?
So you were making a motion to approve?
Yep.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve.
And I just wanna say, I, I agree with a lot of the points that HD's making, but the biggest point that he made that I think affects us here is this design meets our current PRD requirements. If we wanna revisit those, adjust those, make changes, send messages to planning about what we wanna see in the future, then I think we need a special call meeting, we need to go through that process. But this one is already down the path and following the requirements that we had set forth. And that's the reason that I am making a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Good.
Do you wanna do another roll call, or we good?
No, that's good, torn too.
And so this will come for a second reading next month.
I apologize to the council and the crowd and the public for the drama, to get my point across.
So when we get to other, let's go back and revisit your, about a special call meeting. Okay. We'll move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map Thirty-two, Parcels Twenty-nine point zero zero, Twenty-nine point zero two, Twenty-nine point zero three, Twenty-nine point zero four, and Twenty-nine point zero five, to go from R1 to PRD. It's requested by Kyle Griffin with CSDG. On behalf of the property owners, the properties requested to be rezoned contain forty, forty point one acres and are located on Rock Springs Road. Kevin?
Yes, ma'am, council. These are, all these tracts of lands are, there's several tracts of land that are all together, and they total forty point one acres, kinda in between intersections with Cooks Lane and Waldron Road. Again, the land use plan is a medium-density, single-family development is supported here. Shrining zoning is a mix of R1 and PRD, which is Gwyn Farms, Cooks Lane PRDs in town, and R1 in Laverne as well. And their R1 is very similar to our R1 as far as the density and those type of thing. This proposed PRD is for a hundred and twenty-five single-family lots. It's a density of about three point one-two units per acre. The houses would range from sixteen hundred to three thousand square feet in size, be a mix of brick, stone, and concrete siding. Again, all requirements of the town with regard to open space and setbacks would be met. One access point is proposed to Rock Springs Road. Development would also connect to the adjoining Cooks Lane development. Traffic study was completed for this development in conjunction with Cooks Lane, and will require some improvements within Rock Springs Road to include a left-turn lane into this development. This area does lie within the service area of CUD for water. The will-serv letter has been issued that details some off-site system upgrades, which will be necessary in order to meet fire flow requirements. The planning commission did recommend approval, some relatively standard comments regarding required minimum fire flow, and that their amenity building may have a greater requirement, and that if this development would, is approved and develops before Cooks Lane, that there would have to have some temporary turnarounds where those two developments would meet. Staff did recommend approval of this, as it is consistent with our land use plan and the PRD requirements. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion here tonight, and there's been one past week, and so I'm certainly open to answering any questions, and hoping whatever council wishes to do.
Can you talk to us about Rock Springs Road?
Okay.
Specifically, long-range plans for this road call, for it to have two lanes, turny lane, sidewalks better, such as that?
That, the right-of-way requirement is sixty feet. That's, we haven't had any specific designs or anything on Rock Springs Road beyond where it's been improved to Waldron Road, which was done by the, by the Gwyn Farms developer. There has been discussion in years past about improvements from there all the way to the county line, and with Williamson County picking up, or Knowlesville picking up beyond there, obviously. You know, I don't know with the, a continuous left-turn lane, I wouldn't, I don't know if it would be the best in this area, just because it's just gonna increase, I would think would increase speed. You don't have as many streets where you'd need turn lanes for folks to be able to get out of the way of traffic. You would probably have turn lanes there, but not necessarily a continuous turn lane all the way, like we have already done, obviously, from Old Nashville to, to the interstate and that sort of thing, so...
We've done no engineering on this, we have no idea of the stability of the subsurface from, and, and I think, in looking at this, the sidewalk is scheduled to go to that first street, is that cor... No. Yeah, it goes to that first street, correct?
They would, yeah, they would, there would be sidewalks within the development, and then there would be sidewalks from this development to connect to the, to Gwyn Farms, the sidewalk there.
But we don't show anything with the sidewalk to go to Cooks Lane yet, do we?
There is nothing shown beyond the interest of their development, no sir.
Is there a reason we didn't ask the developer to, to participate in the, the road further?
To the end of their property.
To the end of their property, yeah.
Staff did not, did not ask that, no. We did talk a lot with them, you know, you have the, the road there that's shown as a cul-de-sac.
Right.
We, our, my first thing I looked at that is, why wouldn't you connect that street and, and do that? That's a, that's a curb and a hill, and it's a pretty bad location for a road connection, so that's why, once you really look at it...
It's one of the most dangerous spots left in Smyrna when it gets down to it.
So that's why, and without that road connection, you know, the traffic study didn't support anything additional there. That's, that's really how, how we were basing on. That's, again, that's surely been something we, I know there's been a lot of discussion about that in the past, you know, week to ten days, but...
Generally, we participate in the, the engineering for these so that we know what to ask our developers for. I mean, that's the way it was with Gwyn Farms, right? How did, how did that transpire with Gwyn Farms, I don't recall exactly?
Well, there, there was a traffic stu-, well, not traffic study, there was a corridor study down on Rock Springs Road, kinda from Old Nashville to Waldron. And, and basically included a signalization of the intersection with Waldron and Rock Springs and some other things. And so we had that, we kinda knew what was needed up to Waldron Road. And so when the developer, the original developer for Gwyn Farms, because there's been three, I think, total, the original developer for Gwyn Farms came in and were talking to us about it, we had a template, we knew what we needed, and they were required to do it, yes. But again, that corridor study did not go all the way through the county line.
What would be involved in getting the corridor study either to Cooks Lane or all the way to the county line?
That's something we could, I mean, the council at that time, that's been a few years ago, that was done. We could certainly update it and go through that process. It would be, it would, might be something that could be done quickly. I mean, it's gonna take a few months, but it certainly could be done.
I personally feel like that that's something we need to do. We need to, and, and not just that study on the, the numbers of cars and such as that, what I'm talking about basically is the engineering for that section of road, because of the way it rises and falls, and, and the proximity to the creek next to it. I mean, we, just in the last, what, year and a half, I guess, we've gone out there and had to shore up that part of the road in like six or seven different places there, where the creek, where the road was just falling off into the creek.
Right in front of this complex, basically.
One of the worst was right there below it, yes. And, and there is a, oh, shoot, darn iPad. It, uh, there's a ditch or a wet water creek, or is it a full-flowing creek that's on the edge of that property right there?
I know the main creek's on the other side of the road, on the north side.
Yeah, but I mean, where it drains from, from, from this development and surrounding area there.
I know, it's kinda that central area that's not being, not shown with any houses or lots on it, is there's some ponds and some wetlands in that area. So I know they're avoiding that area, that may be what you're talking about. I don't know if it's the, I assume it's probably like a wet weather conveyance of some type, yeah.
Well, I think there's a, no, if I'm not mistaken, there was a spring there, there used to be a spring there.
It could be, yeah.
Kevin, we've had quite a bit of discussion this week. You, Tom, Charles, Jeff, myself. One of the things we talked about was if we're going to, to look at the road all the way to the end of this development, it's probably gonna have to come in to where that cul-de-sac is to be able to get it to be three lanes with the...
Even if we just do a two-lane road with some shoulders and whatnot like that, you're, yeah, you're gonna have to get into that area.
Right.
There's no doubt.
And I guess that's one of my biggest concerns. I mean, and we've talked extensively about the curves. You don't necessarily wanna take them all the way out, because you don't want it to be the drag racing strip to go straight down through there. So you wanna leave some of that in there, so that it does kinda slow traffic down a little bit. But I do have concerns about the road, and what are we looking at doing from Waldron Road, at least at this point, to Cooks Lane, because that's where the majority of the development is. Right now, we're not seeing a large part of the development from Cooks Lane to Williamson County. I don't disagree that we probably need to look at that all the way out to Williamson County, but, and, and it becomes kind of a trade-off. Do we do that, or do we look at doing it when this project does develop, whether it's now or then? For me, I think I'd like to see what that would look like if the, if the town takes on looking at what it's gonna take to go from Waldron Road. I'd like to see the Cooks Lane and all the way out.
Well, I, I think that also, this also plays into the connector road we've been talking about, Rocky Fork. I think that's the whole point of that road, is to take the traffic off of some of these backroads that are well-traveled. I mean, for a lot of years, Rock Springs Road was how you got to Franklin. You know, now we, we've extended Enon Springs, which is taking a lot of that traffic to Rocky Fork now, but it's not getting it all. And the connector road potentially takes more of that. So I think we need to look at that whole process, and what, not, it's not just the developer driving that traffic, right? It's, it's all the traffic to and from. You know, we know sixty-something percent of our citizens leave Smyrna to go to work. Well, a lot of them are going that way.
Well, and then we also have a lot that are coming in from Williamson County as well, and as they grow, that's going to, to increase as well, so...
That whole side, and then, of course, you know, the other thing that I think wasn't really mentioned tonight, a lot of folks maybe don't understand this, but our urban growth boundary pretty much goes all the way to eight forty on Almaville Road, and goes all the way to the county line out that way. So that is, unfortunately or fortunately, depending on how you look at it and your perspective, some of the last developable land in Smyrna that's gonna be in our urban growth boundary. So that's why developers are looking at it. It is the hot corridor right now. And I agree with, one of the gentlemen said, it's not a question of if it develops, it's when. The only way you stop it is you don't sell the land. And unfortunately, people have a right to sell their land, and if they wanna sell it, they sell it. This particular development, we always talk about whether or not something fits. And for me, the question is, is where does, Gwyn Farms is pretty tight. R1 is Cooks Lane and out. And so it does seem like there should be a softer version of this right between to do kind of a step down. I don't think... I don't think no development is an option. I mean, I think Ms. Morgan has a right and maybe needs to develop the property. I know Ms. Gwen told me the same thing when I talked to her about why she was selling her farm. She was telling me how much it cost her just to keep her fields cut and said she couldn't afford it anymore. So there's some of those considerations we have to consider. So I think this is going to develop, but I think it, I think there is an option for a softer option. So I'm not sure that this fits right up against R1. The second thing that I calculated, I calculated the same way, took out the unusable space, giving the developer credit for things like walking trails and amenities. This complex gets almost, if not over five units per acre the way it's designed, if you take out all of the, the fourteen acres that they basically can't do anything with. And I think that's back to HG's point. I realize you get, that we've been given the benefit of calculating all the land available, but unfortunately, it kind of has a tendency to make our units per acre skewed. And in this case, it's approaching a high number. And that's, that's, that's a concern. And then the last one, and I know the developer and engineers in the room, I'm not trying to be disrespectful in any way, but I just don't like the looks of the houses. I, I don't think they look in keeping with what we really would like to see in Smyrna. Yeah, I, I agree with someone else's comment. I think we kind of thought we were getting a better product out of Gwen Farms and we didn't get quite what we expected. And I don't want this to be another situation where, once it's there, now we're stuck with it. So I think there's an opportunity for development. I, I would support development on this land. I just don't know that this design and this solution is the best one for me.
Mayor, you and HG and Steve made some of the same comments that actually I had written down. And when you said about the Gwen Farms, we didn't think we were, we thought we was going to get something different. When you said that tonight, I thought the same thing. I spent last night driving up and down Cook's Lane, Waldron Road. I came, my wife used to teach up there on top of the hill and then she retired from there. So we stopped there at Waldron Road at the red light and we looked up. And we looked at the houses and I thought, gosh, I hope it's not going to look like all of those. They just, they were, they were boxes. And, but I was, I was surprised at what, at what went out there, but, you know, I've driven that road longer than anybody up here. Because.
You've driven longer than anybody.
I have. Fifty-three years I have driven that road.
He'll stop driving soon.
And I know where that little hill is. I knew if I brought up an age issue, you guys would come up. So I know where that little curve is. And we drove it last night and I'm thinking, golly, you know, if we continue to add, we're going, we're going to have some more problems out there. But I had some, I had some other issues and probably for time, I won't bring them all up, but had already, the traffic was obviously an issue. Nineteen homes on one piece of property. It's not fair to anybody. And, but another thing, Kevin, I think we talked a little bit about this in here, is I don't think if they built the houses that they're talking about up to three thousand square feet, there's still some water flow issues out there right now as well, I think. And the CUD's got some issues. It's going to have to be addressed as well.
Yeah, they're going to, they've, they've got a will serve letter basically from CUD. There's, there's a pretty significant off-site water improvement they're going to have to make to develop even to meet the, the, the minimum fire flow that's required for single-family homes.
And I think if I read correctly, it said up to three thousand square foot homes. And if the water flow issue is corrected, if, if the homes are larger than thirty-six hundred, then we have to go with fire protection. And that, that includes the size of the garage as well.
It's everything under roof, yes, sir.
So, you know, it's going to be, I mean, I know that they can probably get thirty-six hundred with the garage. I've seen another subdivision that's having some of the issues that we thought was going to be a little bit larger homes and to make sure they didn't have to put any sprinklers in it, they kind of cut back on the size of those homes, which is another disappointment to me, but that's a different story. See, I'm going to make sure I've got all my questions answered here or comments. Just to confirm, when the traffic study was done, they did do that study with this amount of homes in mind. Is that correct?
Yes.
That was done. But sometimes I think traffic study may not show everything as HG kind of brought out a few minutes ago, so. Anyway, I've got some, I've got some issues with this.
I agree with you and with Steve. A lot of the things that you said, I want to go back to something that, Mayor, that you taught, you brought up about the, the road and getting a study done about trying to see about widening it, widening it. The fact that there's not a development there now, that, does that help us in trying to create right of way for us to be able to have a road or expand the road before the development comes in? Or we just have to work with whatever's going on?
No, I think that's the whole point. It worries me now that if this came in, it's probably going to take, it would take part of where the cul-de-sac is and stuff like that, yeah. And so that's one of the main reasons that I have concerns about this is we've got to decide what needs to be done with that road before, because once a development's there.
Right.
We're stuck.
But then Kevin, you said it would take some time to get that done.
Well, to do a corridor study and that sort of thing, I mean, that's, we typically, we don't do those in-house. We typically hire consultants to do that, so we'd have to do that. And then take, they're going to take however long they take to do that. We're not going to be as involved as what we did originally when we looked at Old Nashville Highway all the way to Waldron Road. That was a much bigger project and so it wouldn't take to go from Waldron to the county line or Waldron to Cooks. Obviously, that's not going to take quite as long, not as much to look at, but it's still going to, I mean, at minimum, you would hire somebody next a month from now and then you would go from there, so. So, I mean, you, yeah, you're looking, I don't know how long it would take, but it may, could be three, four months. Who knows? I don't know how long it would take.
But you see that as a priority, Mayor?
I see it as a priority.
Okay.
I mean, we only get one shot at it.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
But Steve, I do agree with you. I'm not against development of the property. I just want to make sure it's done so that we don't look back and say, or having the same conversation that we had about Gwen Farms.
I'd be willing to bet that the owner of this property wants a good product there as well. I mean, I'd be willing to bet that. We, we received, or I did it today, and I'm going to read something to you guys because I want you to understand a little bit how land ownership works. Yes, I'm in the real estate business. I've seen this county and this city and all of Middle Tennessee explode. Witnessed with my own two eyes. That said, I'm not a bad person. I'm not a bad person for being in the business I'm in. You're in the business you're in. I chose this as a, as a career thirty-seven years ago. Thirty-seven years and I've lived and done it right here in Smyrna, Tennessee. I'm proud of that. So for anybody that wants to take that and attack me about it, I welcome it. I'm a little tired of it and I'm looking into why that's done. Social media is a beast. It's cruel. It's very cruel. There's people in this room that know who I'm talking about. So I'm just going to say that and I'm going to leave it right there. I've about had it with the attacks on me personally. I go to Life Point Church. I'm a proud member of that church. I try to conduct myself in the best way I personally can. That's my character here. Now, I say all that to say this. This council works very hard to make this the best place that we can all live, work and play. Very hard. You don't know the time and the meetings that we spend behind the scenes trying to get things right. I've sat here tonight and I've listened. I've just about had it with the attacks, not from this group tonight, mind you. I appreciate everybody's opinions tonight. We are a very civil group. We offer everybody a chance to speak. We listen with manners and I appreciate everybody that spoke tonight. Ms. Crutchfield, you said something tonight that hit me. You said, "We're in a hot little area over here." From the real estate side of things, I understand location, location, location. We've got Nollinsville, we've got Smyrna, we've got Murkisboro. We've got all these hot little places that are growing just like we are, very close to all of us. So yes, we're going to grow. So yes, we want it to be as best as we can fix it. That's what we want. Now, Tim said something a little while ago I just want the public to be aware of. Hypothetically, R3 meets the same thing that Mr. Sanders, I don't, I guess he's still here. He spoke about this. Woodmont, Potts Crossing, The Vineyards. All the way down Rock Springs Road into town. Those are R3 developments. R3. Just so you know, the density on this product right here is similar to that product. Now, let me say this. We want those homes to look good for Miss Reasonover, for the hills. We want those homes to look good. We've got to do a good job. Now, I will say this too, and I'm sorry I'm a soapbox tonight, but I've held it in as long as I can. I appreciate something Steve said a while ago. When something meets our regulations, it's a little hard to turn it down when it meets our regulations. And so landowners have that, the property rights to sell their dirt as best they can. If you owned that land and you were sitting on it and could no longer take care of it because your family can't help you or because you're in your eighties, I want to read a letter to you. "My name's Marjorie Duggar. I live at the Darren Farm on Cook's Lane. The farm's been in my family for almost seventy years. I grew up on the farm and still live there today. I never thought I would be selling, but after the city limits were extended out our way, it has only continued to grow in our area. It is not surprising that subdivisions are being built in our area since it has been on Smyrna's comprehensive future growth plan for many years." Let me stop there. "The town comes together with staff, council and the public to do our comprehensive study plans. More meetings, if you will. That's how we come to gaining the plan and the mapping for what our town needs to look like with public's input. When my neighbors decided they wanted to sell their farm next to me, I did not try to stop them. I believe it's in the, I believe it is their land and they have a right to do what they want to with it as long as they do not break any governing laws. Instead of fighting against them to try to stop their sale, I changed my future plans. Yes, it is difficult to leave what has meant so much to me and my family for so many years, but I do not believe progress should be stopped just for the sake of a few people. I also do not believe a person should try to take away another person's right to sell just because they do not align with those desires." She closes with this. "I've watched Middle Tennessee grow tremendously over the past twenty years. Many people move here in favor of the quality of life here. Smyrna's prepared for this for years and we as a family understand and appreciate the leadership that's maintained the positive growth. So anybody that has a negative connotation about any of us, why don't you stand up and say who it is instead of hiding behind a little website or a little Facebook post? I welcome that because I know who you are. My character is sick and tired of being attacked on those little posts. I stand tall and I stand proud to be a Smyrna citizen for as long as I have, for fifty-four years here. I grew up here. We all went to Smyrna High School here. We grew up here. Don't you think we want the community to be as good as you do? We sit in the same traffic you sit in. We all deal with the same issues. But be transparent if you want to talk about me. Please." I want to say one other thing. And I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm taking up a little time tonight. I'm, I, I had to get this off my chest. So when I get up in the mornings, one of the things I'm proud that I can get to do is have a little quiet time, say some prayers, thank God for what I have and the blessings that I have in my life. It's because I've worked hard for thirty-seven years to get it. Not because I'm taking a kickback or taking money under the table or whatever you want to call it. That's ridiculous. And I'm tired of it. And if I have to seek legal help on this, I will. I'm going to go after somebody for those attacks. I'm sick of it because I stand tall for that. But here's what I get to do. I say my prayers and I say my gratitudes every morning. Do you have a roof over your head? You sleep well at night? Do you have food on your table? Is this all worth all that sometimes? Sometimes I sit here and think, this is not worth all that. To be honest with you. We do this because we care about this community and we do it because we love it. I'm going to tell you what we get paid, a thousand dollars a month. Would you do it?
That's before taxes and before the insurance we also pay for because we've been accused of getting free insurance for life, which is not true. That's a false, falsity that somebody on Facebook decided to post. We pay for any insurance we get and we pay the same rate as every employee that gets it. So that is just not true. So go ahead.
I was going to wait till the end to say all this.
I, I was actually waiting on the vote and then I had some things to say too, so.
I think you would find if you knew us personally, we're good people. Mr. and Ms. Hill, you have a testimony about me, I know. And y'all are good people too. So I appreciate you coming in here and speaking tonight. For those who don't believe that or can't be transparent in their writings, I challenge you to come off a signature that doesn't show who you are and come and talk to me personally. Let's see how that works, all right? So I'm grateful, I'm closing with this. I'm grateful for everything I have. I'm grateful for all those things I just mentioned. And when you feel sometimes you're negative, when you get up in the morning, say a little prayer and be grateful and thankful for what you do have. The air you're breathing, the roof over your head, think, think thankful, right? So stop and try to be a little positive sometimes instead of being negative about everything all the time. This is a great town. We serve a great town. But you know what else we serve? A great God. And that's where I'm going to close that up. That's where I'm done. So thank you. Appreciate it.
So I was going to say some things myself, but I'm only going to add a couple of things. The comment you made about the money, someone tonight actually made a comment about chasing the money. I, I just want to be completely clear. The town of Smyrna is financially in the best position it's probably ever been in. We do not need to chase money. And if you think that's what anyone up here is doing, you are not paying attention to the budget. You're not paying attention to what we're doing. The second thing is, is I, I have never and will never tolerate anyone on this council that I thought would be getting money from a developer or some sort of kickback. There's been comments about developers contributing to campaigns. I'll challenge every one of you. If any one of you want to line up and write the check on your way out the door, I'll take your money and not the developers. But if you guys aren't contributing and you're not giving, then where are we going to get the money to run a campaign? Self-fund it off that thousand dollars a month that we make? That's not going to do it. So it's frustrating to me that we get attacked for trying to do the right thing. Mark said, and it's true, we all graduated from Smyrna High School. Several of you mentioned how many years you've been here in town and many of them were twenty, twenty-five. All of us have been here thirty-five, forty, fifty years. Ms. Crutchfield, I, I know your kids, you know, I, I know a lot of your families and we're friends. I, I bought your son's camper. I don't know if you knew that. So I, I.
He wants to sell it back.
Yeah, it was the first one I think he sold, but he's sold two since then, I think. But anyway. But we are, you, you all mentioned being a part of a community, Rock Springs community. Rock Springs community is a part of the town of Smyrna community. And we're all a part of that community. And being a community is not harassing Ms. Morgan for selling property. That's not being a community. And I, I don't know if that person's in the room. I don't know if that person lives out there. They just saw something on Facebook, decided to take advantage of it. But the fact that somebody would do that to Ms. Morgan over selling a piece of property and then the emails that we've gotten accusing us of taking money, chasing the money, working with developers secretly, insurance for life, I, I can assure you that.
Oh, we wish.
Yeah, I, I can, I can assure you that none of us are up here doing this because we, we are doing it for ourselves. I served in the Marine Corps. I have a, I have a servant's heart. My goal is to serve people. That's what I do. That's what I've always done. That's who I am. You guys are making it hard. And I'm talking about the folks that are hearing this, not necessarily people in the room. You're making it hard for me to want to continue to do that. And I've never said that in my life.
It's harder by the day.
I, I'm up for reelection this year and I, this is the first time I've ever actually considered, is it worth it? But I'm going to tell you this, I will re-run because I'm not bending over and giving this up to anybody else. And I'm going to keep fighting. And so to the, to the people that run Facebook pages that like to just constantly bash us for everything we do.
That aren't transparent, by the way.
Be honest. Be who you are. And honestly, anyone in this room, anyone that's hearing this that would like to speak to me about any development or anything that we've got coming up, you can send me an email, but I'd rather sit down and have a cup of coffee. I'd rather buy you lunch and let you tell me what you want, what want me to hear because we do listen and it does. I'd rather buy you lunch and let you tell me what you want me to hear, because we do listen and it does factor in. And I don't know how this vote's gonna go, but I think you, I think if you come to us with respect and we give you respect back, we'll get a good product at the end of the day, and that's the goal.
Other comments?
I'm as Rock Springs as any of you people out here. We lived on the Carter Place, which is directly across where The Vineyards are. And back in those days, the Blair property was across the street from us. The Potts Crossing, the Potts property was to the left of us. Behind us was the Gwynn property. I never will forget, and I, for some reason I was thinking about this today, but when I was about eight, I ran away from home and I got all the way down to Rock Springs Church before they picked me up and took me back home. But I've watched Potts Crossing be put in there. I've watched The Vineyards put in there. I've watched Gwynn Springs, Gwynn Farms put in there. And each one of those burned a heart, because you know, those were the hills that I used to climb over. You know, back in those days, I'd just go get the rifle out of the corner and go out in the woods and hunt. Y'all think it's pretty now, you should've seen it back then. I mean, it was magnificent. Ms. Blair used to whip my butt just like she'd whip her own kids, you know? That was just the way it was. We were all on the same party line over there, you know? I'm just gonna say one more thing. Like Jerry, I went riding around this last weekend. Took my mom out there, as a matter of fact, because she wanted to see all of it and what was happening, what was proposed. But we rode through Gwynn Farms, and to be honest with you, Gwynn Farms doesn't look that much worse than a whole lot of the other things that were put in. It follows the PRD guidelines and such as that. What looks bad about it is that when you're driving by on Rock Springs Road, you look up there and you see the backside of all those houses up in there. And you know, years and years ago, this council put in design review for our commercial buildings, and it indicates what type of material that the commercial buildings must be built out of. But if a building is going to front, or excuse me, it's got a front on one street, but a major street is still on the backside of it, then the backside of that building must also comply with the materials. And I don't know if that's something that, you know, that we look at or that Kevin, you suggest to the developers when they come in that they design it so that it doesn't look that way. And you know, I think that once Gwynn Farms gets established a little bit better, it won't be as, gosh, I hate to say this, as repulsive as it seems to be to everybody, because it's, it may not be as bad as what you think it is. But you know, to go back to things that have been earlier said, we're not going to stop the growth. And we talked about this for many, many years. We're not going to stop the growth, but what we feel like our goal is, is to make that growth palatable, as tough as it is. Now, you know, I was sitting here looking across here and I kinda figure that Jerry and Mary Esther and Raquel are the only ones who, whose deeps go, whose roots go the deepest, okay? The rest of us all came here at some point over the years, just like y'all all came here at some point over the years except for Bill.
I'm sorry.
But anyway, you know, what I'm saying is, all of us came here from somewhere else at some point. When are we gonna shut the door? Oh, wait, 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 we can't shut the door. You know, so we just got to make the best of it that we can. You know, you know what our problem is, y'all? We've made this too attractive a town. People wanna come here, and it is a good place to live. You know, I don't wanna live anywhere else. Gosh, we've all done a bit of preaching tonight, haven't we?
Sorry, I started something. I didn't mean to.
I'd like to make a motion to deny this project based on the road not meeting, not being designed according to standards which will fulfill our needs.
Second.
Steve, you're in a second?
No, it was Jerry. So, motion and a second. Other discussion.
I'm wondering with all the comments made tonight, hearing from all the people who live out that way, you know, I sit on planning commission too, and this met all of our regs. So, it kinda made sense to us to show that as an approved product, right? I'd like, if we can, I don't know if you'll allow it, Mayor, I'd like for the developer, I think's in the room, to speak to what they've heard tonight, to see if there's any remedy at all for a potential deferral to fix this in a better way. Is there anybody that might wanna speak to that? Is that okay, Mayor?
Do I have a motion to do that? A motion to suspend the rules and allow them to speak?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to allow them to speak.
Go to a second. All in favor?
I think what I'd like to hear is, you've heard the concerns here tonight. We're trying to be good neighbors to these people. We're also trying, we know we're gonna grow. What remedies might you have that you could present to us after listening to this tonight that maybe the council can absorb, the neighbors can absorb, and see if there's a better fit perhaps going forward? I think you wanna be a good neighbor too.
Sure, absolutely. As I mentioned in the beginning, we wanna be good neighbors and we really wanna support the city. Rather than a denial, we'd ask for a deferral. Give us a chance to take the feedback from what everyone has brought today and produce something that you guys could review again. If that would be, you know, something that the council would be willing to do.
Would you be willing, would you be willing to have a little neighborhood meeting out that way?
Absolutely, absolutely. Neighborhood meeting as well as meeting with, you know, codes, anyone who has ideas of how to improve it.
I think these people that are here tonight would welcome, would welcome that if there's a remedy at all that we could get to, to make it work for everyone involved.
Sure.
I agree, Mark.
To me, that makes better sense than giving an up or down tonight, letting people hear you, letting you hear them.
Sure.
And seeing if there's a way maybe to come to some sort of agreement. We know it's gonna sell. We know it's gonna grow. I've heard tonight, everybody just wants to get it right. And I'm willing to go along with that idea.
Yeah, we're happy to do that.
So, my only question, Jeff, is with the deferral, obviously, if we're talking about potentially changes or wholesale changes to the PRD that's been submitted, do they have to go back through planning?
If you decide, if you decided at that time that it was substantial, but this would at least allow them to come back to you with the plan, so you could comment on that. If it was substantial, then at that time, we would say, this is too many changes. It needs to go back to planning, but I couldn't make a judge without looking at it.
Gotcha. That would be my only concern with the deferral, is that.
But you still get it out there for the discussion purposes.
That's the goal. I think the people that live out there would like to hear more.
Yeah, there's nothing against it.
I'm a big believer in compromise, but I'm just gonna say straight up, until I get a very usable plan on that road, I can't go along with it. And I just, you know, I mean, how long can you defer something for, Jeff? How, and then back to Kevin and Charles Neil, how long will it take?
Well, why don't you offer what a usable plan looks like to you? So that they have an idea. What does a usable plan look like to you?
You're not talking about the plan, you're talking about the road.
I know, but if I heard you right, and I'm not arguing with you, you said, until I see a usable plan. You talking about the road only or the development?
Well, the road's what I'm talking about. I mean, I, you know, if the development can be fixed, I mean, you know, they've gone that far with it and such as that. But actually, you know, to be honest with you, I'd like to defer it and I'd like to see, I'd like to see us come up with new PRD guidelines and I'd like them to apply to this also. You know, this is not over in the middle of a thousand other homes on the west side of town. And this is, granted, looking for a step down from the estate homes over there to the rest of the community of Rock Springs Road out there.
And that's why I want them to gather. That's why I want them to.
And I'm in favor of the deferral and them doing that, but I also have major concerns about the road. And I wanna see.
That's fair, and I think they need to know that. The developer needs to know that.
Right. Well, I think anybody that lives out there needs to know that.
I believe Ms. Reasonover mentioned, you know, if they do any widening, she's gonna lose her tree. She may not want her road widened either. So, it's pleasing everybody is hard to do, guys. It's really hard to do. But we're trying to improve it for everyone, right? So, I hope you see that the temperament here is to try to get a better result. That's all we're trying to do here. Does that work for everybody?
We're all willing to make concessions. We want it to work. We're not, we're not trying to deny anybody.
Okay. I'm sorry, I shouldn't ask the question. Did you answer?
There's a motion and a second on the floor to deny. So, let's vote on the denial first, and then if there's a second motion to be made. Because we're gonna have to vote on that.
Do you wanna roll call vote?
So, motion and a second to deny. All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
That's Raquel, Steve, and Jerry. Yes?
To deny?
To deny.
To deny?
And HG.
So, you wanna deny rather than defer? Okay, so, do a roll call vote.
Okay. Councilwoman Peoples?
Aye.
Councilman Cole?
Aye.
Councilman Morrell?
No.
Councilman Short? Councilman Sullivan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
No.
Mayor Reed?
I have a question for you. If I vote to deny, we can't come back to, I mean, if we vote to deny it, we can't come back to ask them to defer it, correct?
Correct. You can still ask them to have those same conversations, but it would be dead at this point.
They would just need to resubmit.
They'd have to reset.
Okay.
It's basically the same thing.
Yes, to deny. Yes, to deny.
Correct.
But I want them to have the discussion to bring back to us.
Absolutely.
What they can come up with with a compromise.
So, you've got five and two for denial.
Kevin, a couple of questions before any of them leave the room, because there were some things brought up during public comment that I wanna address. Number one, someone said to go out and rezone everything R1. Can you explain to the public why we can't go to somebody's property and say, you've got to rezone your property to this?
Yeah, we can't. I mean, maybe legally could, I don't know, but it wouldn't be the right, to go in and rezone someone's property without their consent. You know, state law is very clear, we cannot annex a piece of property without their consent. I would, I would also hesitate to advise you to rezone property without the owner at least having some request or some consent to it.
So, for a rezone, the property owner brings it to us to be rezoned. So, I just, I wanna do, try to do a little bit of education here, because I think a lot of times what happens is, there's not communication and people just don't know.
Can I follow up real quick?
Yes.
All right, so, when we expanded this way through our urban growth and we annexed in when the town could do that, we were annexing in at R1, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we've seen as it's been, as it's developed, we've seen R3 and PRD to be the primary rezoning of the R1. Is that also correct?
Yes, for the most part.
That's it?
Okay. Correct, yeah.
For years, though, any property that came in had to come in at R1, and then we had to change it to another. When did they change that, Kevin? Do you remember?
Well, I mean, R1 is the lowest density zoning that we have in our zoning ordinance. And so, it is the default zone. If someone, in the years past, when the city could annex without the owner's consent, it would be the default zone would be at R1, which is what happened in this entire corridor all the way to Williamson County 30 years ago, whenever that happened.
So, hang on a second. So, then I've got a question. We had land on Sam Ridley that was brought in the town as R6. So, how did that happen? If everything's brought in as R1?
It can be brought in at anything. This is, yes, this was, this only really occurred when the city, before the state law changed and the cities could annex on their own initiative.
And that didn't apply to the land that I'm talking about along Sam Ridley? Because I thought that's what happened then. It's been zoned R6 since 1990.
Nobody knows when that was. I mean, that was when the Sam Ridley Parkway came through.
Because we sat up here a few months ago and said, this land came in as R6, and it's always been R6. And we agreed with PRD to try to make it better.
It was probably done on the same night.
Yeah, they probably, again, that is the default. If there's not another request from an owner or if there's not a, you know, most of the time, it was default. We annexed, at least my time here.
I would just like to accept that it can come in as R1 or R6, and some has come in as R6 and some has come in as R1.
It can come in as anything. If a, if a, if a, if someone wanted to be annexed into Smyrna for whatever reason and they didn't request a zoning, because typically that's what happens, is someone is annexed and they request a zoning at the same time with annexation. If someone requests a zoning and there's no, no specific district request, like on the one you looked at last, this, tonight, earlier, the churches, the 14 acres that the church would maintain is defaulted to R1 because they didn't ask for anything else. So, that's kinda the default zoning, if nothing else is requested.
If this were to be brought in as a pure R1, how many homes would go here?
Just based on acreage?
Yes.
R1's about two per acre. At max, is usually what you end up with.
So, about 80.
About 80 or so, yeah.
If it were brought in as R3, how many?
Roughly the same as what you have here, yeah. Again, that's only, that doesn't take into account topography, wetlands, all those other things that happen. I'm just looking at gross max kinda density.
They only have about 26 acres usable with their current design layout. If the houses that are in usable land were replaced with R1, basically two per acre, then you were talking about 50, 55 maybe.
Correct, correct.
Okay, another comment that was brought up was, we don't allow public comments, and that's not accurate either. Someone can call to get on the agenda for public comments, or if something comes through on a second reading, there is a public comment period allowed for individuals to get up and speak. So, I didn't want people to think that we don't allow public comments at our council.
Mary Esther?
Yes.
Isn't it important to explain that the law just changed as to why we're.
Jeff, do you wanna talk? So, there's been some thinking that we're trying to under the table and all this in regards to public comments. Jeff, can you talk a little bit about our concern with public comments being required prior to the agenda coming out and why we wanted to change that?
Sure, because of the changes. And previously, we had the requirement that you give your name on the Thursday before the Tuesday meeting, correct?
Correct.
And so, with an agenda maybe not coming out until Friday or Monday, then the citizen wouldn't be able to look to see, okay, maybe I wanna speak on that agenda item. And so, this falls with all of our, not just the city council, but with board zoning appeals, any of our boards. And so, that's why we're making it easier for folks to get on there 24 hours before a meeting. So, we're making it easier for people to speak for or against anything. And so, that's the reason for, that we wanted to go ahead and change that now.
Okay. Kevin, let's also talk about the schedule in regards to rezoning, and I know it's, or even possibly annexation, in regards to how we notify and what we're required to do in regards to notification.
Well, the requirements are per state law, which is changing effective July 1st. But right now, we have to put a notice in the newspaper 15 days before, and that's all we're required to do. That's changing for zoning, annexation, either one.
15 days before the hearing, not before plan?
For the public hearing, for the public hearing, yes. What is changing beginning July 1 is that's changing from 15 days to 21 days for rezonings. For annexations, in addition to that 21 days before the public hearing, paper, newspaper notice, we have to send, or required by law to send letters to the county mayor, the county commissioner of that area, as well as adjoining property owners, and it's 200 feet around. We had to put up the signs that are larger. So, within the signs, there's very specifics on the signs as far as the height, the size, what they say.
That we have to follow.
That we have to follow beginning July 1. We've already got a price on the sign. We're working to get that done. So, that's what we're required to do. We also, we do put the signs up. I know there was a comment tonight about the size of the signs. That's, you know, that's the same size as a real estate sign, you know, or whatever. So, but it's not a large sign. I know it's not a large sign.
It is bigger than this piece of paper, though, right? Because that was the comment. It was no bigger than this piece of paper.
It's a two by three, two foot.
So, typical yard sign.
Typical, like a yard. Typical, like a yard, or, not yard sales signs or real estate signs, you know, that's, yeah. We do put that out. I try to get those out certainly before this first reading at council. We don't always get them out before the planning commission meeting. Why frankly, it's just a matter of manpower and time. Our, our submittal deadline is two and a half weeks prior to the planning commission meeting. So we have a week and a half basically to do all of our reviews. We review everything twice. And to get every, all the packets out to the, to the planning commission a week ahead of time. And we don't always, we don't always make that, and that's not.
And I guess the reason I wanted you to have this discussion is that we're not trying to do anything underhand. We're not trying to, in the cloak of darkness, do everything. We are trying to get.
Although it is dark outside now.
We are trying to, to get things out. Could we be better at some things? Absolutely, one hundred percent. Everybody can be better, and those are some of the things that we're having discussion about. But I think as some have said tonight, it's just really frustrating to do this job because we love it and constantly be criticized. We absolutely know, absolutely, that we can be better. And you know what? Having discussions, when I came to see y'all on Monday, we had discussions. We've already implemented some of those things that we had discussions about. And so I never mind that. What I mind is the same thing you all do. Be upfront about who you are. And I would encourage each one of you, if you're on a page that is somebody that's not putting their name on there, or is anonymous, or you don't know who the moderator is, you be the one to ask. If you're interacting with that page, you ask that question. Because it doesn't, they won't answer us.
They'll block us, pretty much.
But, but I just, because you know what? It's all good for every one of us. It's good for our community when we have communication, and disagreement is okay. Disagreement is okay.
Civil.
Civil disagreement is okay.
What's not okay is for a person, actually a coward, behind, behind a name or a fictitious deal, and insult, and go after an eighty-seven-year-old lady.
Great.
I was appalled to hear that somebody, and this is another eighty-seven-year-old. It's also appalling to hear that someone drove by Ms. Mabel and shouted obscenities to her. When I grew up, I was taught a lot better than that. And if that person's here and you want to come for it, we'll go outside and we'll talk about it.
Okay.
When me and you were growing up out in Rock Springs area, what would we have done? We'd have been on the porch of the shotgun. And the next time they came by, it'd be different. So the community has civilized, but we used to handle these things differently.
But y'all, we all have a, we all live in the same community. We may not agree, but we have to figure out how to get along. And you know what? I think tonight was a perfect example of that. We may not all agree, but hopefully you all can sit down together and we can come up with something that works for everybody. But I just ask you in regards to social media, be willing to stand up. Be willing to stand up to ones that are not posting who they are, and, and call them out.
We can probably tell you who they are.
Yeah. So, um.
One more question I wanted to ask you.
Sure.
In, in the process, this particular one, so if everything flows correctly, can you just tell the public, when does the council as a whole see this project?
Well, it's made available to you, I know, with the planning commission packet, because I think you all should have access to the planning commission packet. Which is, so it's the Friday before the planning commission meets on Thursday, which is the first Thursday of every month.
So if we go get the packet or watch the meeting, we see it at planning. But the first time it shows up in the council packet or on, on our agenda?
It's first reading.
Is the Friday before the Tuesday meeting.
Which is normally right after that Thursday when they meet.
That's right, so.
So give a timeline, just give a timeline of this project from when it came to planning, just to give the public an idea.
Well, it was submitted to us, our deadline was mid-April, the Monday, seventeen day, or, yeah, prior to the planning commission meeting. It's always like the middle of the month, so I think it was like.
So mid-April?
Mid-April. The planning commission was the first Thursday of April, which I think was the second. So that's, that's really the timeline, and then here tonight for first reading, so, and then.
And had it passed tonight, it would have come back to us at the June, June, June meeting for second reading.
We would have taken a workshop again.
Right.
And you would, you would discuss it at that workshop.
Right.
Yeah, there was a comment tonight also about something got approved, and then two weeks later, it was approved again. We don't vote on anything in two weeks, perks like that. If we vote on something twice, it's two months, it's two different meetings.
Unless it's planning the council.
Planning the council, maybe, but then it's still got another council vote.
Right.
So, you know, it, this, this one, this one has been, middle of April till now is almost six weeks or five weeks. And if it got approved, it would be another month, so four weeks. So even with this one, which I know a lot of you thought seemed quick, this would still follow an eight or nine-week process, and two opportunities for you guys to speak and to say something. So I appreciate you being here, and I'm glad that you were, so that we can get things right. But just, just because it may not, you, just because it may seem quick, there is a process. And honestly, I, I didn't even, I, I watched this on planning, it met all of our requirements, it got approved on planning. I had some concerns about the density, we've talked about that many, many times. So it was kind of like, okay, this is another PRD that looks very similar and has followed the guidelines. But until I got an email from one of you guys last Thursday or Friday, it's really the first time I'd heard from anyone.
And I think that's important too, Steve, that if you're concerned about something, speak up. Because until you tell us what your concerns are, we don't know.
Send it to us, not on Facebook. I'm okay on Facebook, as long as you use your name. As long as you stand behind it.
Okay. So let's have a little bit of a discussion in regards to the road. I'd like for staff to have some discussion in regards to Rock Springs Road, and bring us back what, how you'd like to, what your recommendation would be for how to, for us to proceed with that.
Good.
Okay? Okay, council, anything else in regards to this before we move on to?
There's more.
Eight B. Okay? And I will give you all the same opportunity. You all are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, if you would like to stay. But if there's some of you that would not, then.
Haven't had dinner?
You are welcome to go. We'll move on to item eight B under new business, consideration of a resolution requested by the Tennessee Department of Transportation relative to the Jefferson Pike State Route 266 intersection improvements at Nissan Drive and Sam Ridley Parkway. Charles, we know how you love coming and presenting.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this request is part of the application process to pull a grant funding for the double left turn lane from Sam Ridley onto Jefferson Pike.
I guess he's done for that. Sorry, Charles.
Sorry.
Say that again.
Say it again, okay.
It was a little noisy.
Uh, this resolution is part of the initiation packet with TDOT, since we're getting federal funding for this project for the double left turn lanes from Sam Ridley onto Jefferson Pike.
Council questions on that? Do I have a motion?
So, second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is consideration of a resolution approving amendments to the Smyrna Police Tow Manual Third Edition.
Mayor, council, I'll handle this.
Okay.
So, as we spoke before, this is just a minor change with where the tow lots can be located for, to be on the rotation list. Previously, it stated that it could be within five miles of the city limits. But due to some of the complications that that presented, we've requested that it now be within the urban growth boundary. That way that we're not too far into Murfreesboro or other communities that our officers and other personnel would have to go deal with those issues when cars are towed.
Thank you, Jeff. This, this is another example of a citizen coming to me and asking questions and pointing out what he felt like was unfair, and us going through the process and making a change. So this is another example of communication.
Well, I think when he came up and was talking about it, it was something we'd not even thought about. So, okay. Questions or comments on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D, consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Rex, where you been?
I've been out in lobby, ma'am.
Rex, is that where you really been?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Smell his breath.
The chaplain says that's where you been, he's vouching for it.
The tax rate ordinance establishes the property tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Our recommendation is for the tax rate to remain the same from the prior year at fifty-two point five seven cents on each one hundred dollars of assessed taxable property. We're asking that you approve this ordinance adopting the tax rate.
Okay, um, questions on the property tax rate?
This, um, this rate keeps us revenue neutral essentially, on existing base or not. Or is it, yeah?
Yes, except for new properties, new houses.
New property, right.
Okay, um, questions for Rex on this?
Yeah, I guess I should have been more clear. Some of the assessments that just came out that will go up, their rate would be adjusted to fit that. This is just the standard rate for the year. So if adjustment comes later, an assessment comes later, we'll stay in revenue neutral.
Yes.
Yeah, just will make sure that's clear.
Okay. I guess we'll wait a little second or two for. Jerry, knock on that door.
I thought Rex was gonna say it's assault.
That's not happening.
Todd, can you, oh, never mind, here it comes.
Yes, for the tax rate.
Is that a motion?
Do we have a motion?
Make that a motion.
A motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion?
Good job, Rex.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rex and staff, I just want to say thank you for everything you've done to continue to keep this tax rate low in regards to all the services that we're able to offer our citizens. I know it's not always easy, but we do appreciate it, so. Okay, we'll move on to item E, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to a budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Mayor and council, these are the budget amendments we went over at the workshop, and they're for the current year, fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We're trying to make sure we get everything done before June thirtieth. And I can tell you, there will be additional amendments for the second reading.
Okay, questions for Rex on these? Okay, seeing none, I, do I have a motion?
You have to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F is consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
The ordinance and summary budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five are submitted for your consideration. The detailed budget is in the retreat book. I have attached the changes from retreat to first read spreadsheet for your convenience. It details the budget changes from what was presented at the retreat. I'd also like to tell everybody that the budget is posted on our website for them to see. We've been working on this for several months, and we spent a day at the budget retreat going, digging pretty deep into the budget. And we would, asking you to approve the ordinance adopting the budget.
Questions for Rex on the budget?
Another excellent job, Rex.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item G is announcement of approval of a professional services agreement with Mercer Group Associates and Executive Search Firm relative to the town manager position. I kind of wanted to give the public an update on our special call meeting. The council met on May the sixth to review several proposals that we had received from executive search firms to assist us in the selection of our new town manager. We actually reviewed three. We did virtual meetings with those three search firms, and we unanimously selected Mercer Group Associates out of Manor, Georgia to lead our search. Just to give you a little bit of information on Mercer Group, they have a really strong national presence with over two thousand executive level searches. They're also really represented well in the southeast, where they've recruited over twenty-five city manager positions just in the past five years. Their experience in attracting and encouraging, encouraging highly qualified candidates, I think will be a real asset to our search. The process should take about ninety days, which will include the recruitment of the candidates, the initial resume review and screenings, presentations of semi, a semifinalist list, facilitating interviews of finalists, the background checks, and any negotiations with the selected, with selected candidates, if we choose for them to do that. The goal is to be able to have a candidate selected by early August, hopefully with a start date of twenty twenty-four. So I just wanted to update you all on that. Item nine under other, Jeff, do you have anything under other tonight?
I do not under other.
HG brought up wanting to have some discussion in PRDs. Let me say this. Tim and Mark have one of the hardest jobs of any of us, sitting up here. Having to sit on planning and be the person between the developers and the town council is a tough, tough job. They have a gamebook, a playbook that we provide them to go by. And Steve, you said it tonight, that project met all of those rules and requirements. But HG, I don't disagree with you, as the community grows, I do think periodically we need to go back and look at that. And look at what are the rules and regulations that we want Tim and Mark to be able to have discussion with, as well as, as the staff to be able to do. Staff's that front line.
Since we didn't have that at all, though.
Right.
I mean, it just, it was wide open.
So I think a special call meeting is warranted, and, but I do not want us to, uh, I can't think of the word that I want to use. But I don't want us to let this time pass without saying how much we appreciate the job that Tim and Mark do. Because those individuals are calling them constantly. We get calls as well, but they are getting them even more than we are in regards to these projects, so.
One comment, and I, I don't know if this is even appropriate, but would it be appropriate for us to consider reviewing kind of that playbook, that guideline, on a more regular basis? I'm not saying every year, but maybe every couple of years. The last time we had a conversation, I think it was this council, I don't know if Jerry was on the council yet or not. But it's been about four years, I think, since the last time we had that meeting. And things keep changing.
Well, it was, yeah.
Yeah, the On Street Parkin was the last meeting we had.
Right.
Because we were talking about having four on the pad.
I think we changed some side setbacks in that meeting, we did several things. And the reality is, at that time, that was what we thought the citizens wanted and what we thought was the right solution. But just like then, we had, we had R6 undeveloped back then, right? We, we no longer have that.
Why don't we have that discussion at that meeting?
Well, I think, I think maybe, and, and that's why I break it up, is maybe just, if we're gonna talk about it at the meeting, maybe we think about what's the appropriate timing. I, I don't, you know, I don't want to get in a situation where we're telling Mark and Tim every six months something different, right? That's, that can't work. But I also don't want to get in a situation where we waited four or five years and now we're behind again.
But it's also not fair to the developers to do that either, because they start, they start their planning process so far in advance. And so, I mean, again, I think there, we have to look at all parties involved.
Yeah, I think six months is way too aggressive.
Oh, no, I'm thinking a couple of years. Every other year, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So why don't we, and we can have discussion about that at the special call meeting as well. What if we have, where are you pointing?
Got a question before you do that, sorry.
Got a question before you do that, sorry. Uh, not nice to point, sorry. Is, would you like this to be a workshop with the planning or do you want it just council?
I think initially it needs to be just, just council. Don't y'all agree that council needs to come to some decisions first and then maybe there's a meeting with, yeah. Um, so what if tomorrow Casey or Amber, whoever, kind of gets with everybody to try to come up with a schedule? And, and I would say we probably, I mean, I would rather block off three or four hours. We may not use all of that, but I'd rather block off enough time. And, um, and we may also need to check with staff because we're probably gonna need some direction from staff as to what are other communities currently doing. So we may need to check with them to see how long they think it'll take to gather that information for us to be able to have that discussion. Everybody good with that? Good? Okay. Um, anything else under other? Rex, status report.
March state shared tax, we received six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. The March local sales tax, we received one million, five hundred, fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Our actual year-to-date tax collections are more than they were at the same time last year. And we're very close to budget estimates when you combine both state shared and the local.
Questions for Rex? Okay, thanks Rex. Directors, department heads, any announcements tonight? Did you not get enough airtime, Kevin?
I just got a quick, one more time. No, this, this is just a, a personal thing. This Sunday, my son is getting married. I was gonna publicly say congratulations to him. Sweet girl, we love her to death. And Todd dared me and told me he paid me a hundred bucks to wear my tuxedo tonight, but I did not do that. He tried, but I didn't do it.
Well, congratulations. It's, I'm glad that you're having a nice addition to the family, so congratulations, Kevin. Um, Amber, anything?
I actually have a slide tonight.
A slide?
So, yes.
Okay.
Um, I was able to go out to Brown's Chapel Elementary School, which is, um, the school you were speaking of earlier that Kelly Ghostery, um, has been out for, what'd you say, sixteen years?
Fifteen, when it started, fifteen.
Um, so she's also the one that built the curriculum, as you talked about, for the field trips surrounding the memorial that also goes to the airport and teaches the kids not only about the history of Smyrna, Super Air Force Base, um, the, uh, airport itself, but also Captain Kooz, and it really talks about the core values as well. So we've built a presentation around that. Um, mayor wasn't able to be present, so she sent me flying on out there. Um, I got to meet with a hundred and thirty second graders out there at the school and kind of present, talk to them about things. Yes, I was able to stand in line with them and some of them were taller than me. Um, but had a really good time out there, uh, meeting with them and getting to spend a little time with them a couple of Fridays ago. Uh, so that's all I have for that. The only other thing that I was gonna announce is just, you were talking about things that we're kind of always implementing to do better. Um, one of those things is the public comment. Um, we're gonna get that more in line with statute and that, um, language has been updated going forward on, it will be on all legal notices. Um, it's already updated on the website. We've recently launched a new website, so we were able to build an online form now through my page on the website where people can go and sign up for public comments for any of the, you know, meetings with an actionable item. So that's kind of user friendly. And then there's also a new section on my page as well where each of my legal notices that I'm putting in the paper, I'm also gonna be putting those on the website monthly. So there's a whole section on the town clerk page that's dedicated to legal notices and publications as well. Um, another thing that Heather's gonna start doing that Jeff has asked her to do as well from some of this feedback is, um, when we publish the agenda, when I send out my agenda to you guys, to all users, and I put that on the website, Heather is also gonna start sharing that on social media as well. So the public will know that the agenda is out as soon as you guys know the agenda is out. So just a few of the things that we're doing to try to streamline things, be more, you know, evident, transparent and accessible to citizens.
And be patient with us on the website. We are trying to work through that and find, you know, sometimes it's, it's when users tell us that, hey, this wasn't as good. And so sometimes we may be able to change some of that. So just be patient with us.
Sure.
Jeffrey L?
Uh, yes, I have several things. First, um, we want to continue to keep, uh, Director of Schools, Dr. Sullivan, uh, his son, Asher Sullivan, uh, in our, in our prayers, our hearts go out to that family and we lift them up and support. Uh, also as well, Sergeant Andy Miller, uh, his father, uh, Jack Miller had passed this past week. Both of those fellows are beloved people in, in Smyrna and Rutherford County. And so, uh, we just, we just want to let Andy know that we're thinking about him and we.
Daddy was at Kid Safety Day on that Saturday.
Mm-hmm, sure was.
And then passed away on Sunday, so.
He drove a school bus and the kids always enjoyed it very much. Uh, I do want to mention before I get into slides, uh, Chris Good, who's in the booth, you can't see her there, but she has been working on, uh, I was able to look at some Police Week videos that she's making and, uh, they're excellent and I think that you're gonna enjoy those when, when those do come out. But I did want to recognize her for that. All right, all right, thank you, Heather. So one drop today, if you didn't hear, hear Heather. Uh, here we have, uh, at Elders, we want to congratulate them on their recent grand opening. Uh, several, several of us showed up, I'm, I don't know if I can see that picture, it's so small, I can't see who all else was there. Uh, I know that, uh, Todd and Heather and, uh, the judge and the clerk, uh, were also there, as well as, uh, county commission. Anyway, that's, uh, I thought there was more pictures than that, but anyway, that's, uh.
Do you want more next time?
I even, I even have readers on it, I can't, I can't see that.
It's getting late.
Anyway, long time was, Jenny Williams ran that store and we know that it's gonna be a success, uh, good people there. Secondly, uh, it's International Firefighters Day. Uh, it's observed every year on May fourth to honor and pay tribute to the great work done by firefighters while protecting people's lives and property. Firefighters put their lives, uh, at risk, work tirelessly and volunteer anytime to prevent damages caused by fire accidents and life. So, uh, thank you to our firemen, thank you chief and all of your folks. And congratulations to Assistant Chief, uh, John Lear. He was one of the recipients this year's Hometown Heroes Award for the Child Advocacy Center. Uh, we're thankful for his work in the department and the community. Uh, obviously John's been a leader for quite some time and, uh, it was good to see that he was recognized uh, by an outside organization for the work that he's done. I believe that is all I have.
Yep. So I had not looked over and it, we were in the middle of something and I looked over and Ben, you were sitting there and I kind of got startled because you were sitting there, so.
I think you were gonna ask about the minutes and you're not used to.
And that's exactly what it was. I was gonna ask about, were the minutes okay? And I looked over and there he was. So I kind of was startled, but, uh, we sure are glad to have you. I'm so glad that I'm gonna have another MTSU Blue Raider and I don't have to worry about orange, right? Never. Good, good. Anything tonight?
I think one of those three recipients tonight is going to UT Knoxville, am I right, Mike?
That is correct.
There you go.
That is correct. And I would never fault that that child, while they were here.
One was going into S U two.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. Let me tell you, that was a hard decision, those kids, oh.
Should have been harder to do, personally.
I, I tried not to look at that, I tried not to look at that, so. But we're glad to have you.
Thank you much.
Yep. Raquel?
Um, let's see, there are a couple of slides. Um, so council member Jerry Short and I recently appeared on the Roundtable Show hosted by Wayne Blair and Rick Hall. The Roundtable is a weekday program on WGNS from nine to ten a.m. It hosts, its hosts rotate and bring a variety of guests. The show focuses on news, sports, politics and the people of Rutherford County. Wayne Blair and Rick Hall host the Tuesday time slot focusing on Smyrna area news and people. Thank you to the Good Neighbor Station for a format that focuses on the Smyrna community and to Wayne and Rick for serving as hosts. Wayne Blair, Councilmember Jerry Shorts, Short, myself and Rick Hall are all pictured from, um, that Roundtable discussion. To listen to this episode, visit the town's Facebook page or visit the WGNS website. Okay, let's see. There's another. So we recently, last Saturday, two Saturdays ago, had, um, Kid Safety Day. And a great time was had by all attendees at Kid Safety Day. Thank you to TriStar Stonecrest Hospital, Smyrna Fire and Police Departments, Smyrna Parks and Rec and the Smyrna Event Center for hosting that day. And then also, um, recently, last Saturday, I spoke at the Oak Subdivision's annual HOA meeting and discussed, uh, town updates and planning concerns, um, that they had some questions about. And also in attendance was interim town manager Jeff Peach, who was also fielding questions and.
Carl Boyd.
Yes, and Commissioner Carl Boyd, Carl Boyd was also in attendance that day. Um, those are all of my slides. I would also like to say congratulations to the Kooz Scholarship recipients. Um, congratulations to Assistant Chief John Lear and congratulations to all of the upcoming graduates. Um, and condolences to Andy Miller and his family and also just to, as Jeff said, keep Dr. Sullivan and his family in our prayers and our thoughts. And that's all I have here. Um, I always want to say your honor, I always want to call you the judge for some reason. That's all, man.
HG, thank you, HG.
Thank you, your honor.
And then you make that joke every time.
He needs to come up with new material.
You know, I have a ten-year-old grandson and, and, uh, just the thought of what the Sullivan family must be going through was just, you know, it's so hard to, to put your own heart, put, put your head around it and, and your heart goes out to them so deeply. And, uh, uh, Jack Miller was a great man. He, uh, some of y'all may not have known Jack, but if you went to any of our local car events or anything like that, Jack was the guy who had the mid-fifties police car. He always showed up with that car.
It also like Andy Griff, it reminded me of the area.
Yeah, in, in, in a lot of ways. And I'm sure Andy, his son, will probably bring that car out there still, just to continue that tradition. That's just, that's just Andy. Uh, okay, coming up this year, school's gonna be letting out soon and the SOAC will have an outdoor, excuse me, outdoor adventure camp. Uh, you can register at the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center. Uh, they have openings for the SOAC Outdoor Adventure Camp the week of June third through the seventh. It's a five-day camp for ages eight to twelve. And it'll allow the campers to explore various outdoor recreation, uh, and, uh, and outdoor activities. Learn how to survive in the wilderness, practice paddling a kayak, learn new athletic sports, team building challenges and more. Camp days will take place at Sharp Springs Park in order to get the full outdoor experience. Um, the time will be eight to twelve, snack will be provided. Uh, the cost is a hundred dollars or seventy-five dollars if you are a SOAC, um, member and registration is required through the community pass. You can contact Mike, it's not up there, I don't think, Mike Craft, mike.craft@townofsmyrna.org for more information. Another event coming up, which is an ongoing event, and I know everybody's ready for some fresh vegetables and such as that. But the Smyrna Depot Farmers Market will start Saturday, May eighteenth through September twenty-first. Stop in, get some fresh produce and visit the vendors. They also have arts and crafts and, uh, other assorted items besides just the, uh, fruits and vegetables. Rex showed us the numbers, so shopping local must still be working. And gosh, tonight, I think we were kind, weren't we? Just keep on being kind. Thank you all.
You ready?
Tim, your honor?
Thank you, your court judge.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I also wanted to reiterate what Mary Exter said, how much I appreciate what Mark and Tim do on the planning commission. They often tease me and say, you need to do this because they want me to know how hard it is.
Well, we're not teasing. Um, you know, this is National Law Enforcement Week. I'd like to thank our officers for their contributions that they make on a daily basis, their dedication, their loyalty, all their service to the town, so to our law enforcement community, thank you county law enforcement, thank you and surrounding cities, thank you. Uh, you guys make it safe for us and keep our community safe, so thank you very much. Uh, with that, I have a couple of slides. The weather's getting warmer, it's time to book your tee time at the Smyrna Golf Course. Book today. Visit Smyrna Golf Course on Facebook or Smyrna Golf Course website to book your tee time.
Course is in excellent shape, I was there today.
Me too.
What were you doing there? Were you lost?
Having a hamburger.
She better be practicing for the golf cram, I can tell you that.
There's no amount of practice that's gonna help.
Hey, she and I've been out.
I'd rather be on the planning commission.
I'm gonna remember you said that, that's for sure.
Okay, I think I have another slide. Okay, uh, we've got the opening of Splash Town, uh, that is May twenty-fifth and the Splash Pad is opening May twenty-first. We're looking forward to opening of the Splash Pad at Greggy Mills and Splash Town, Splash Pad and Pad at Gregley Mills opens at Tuesday, May twenty-first and Splash Town on the twenty-fifth. And we want everybody to come out, uh, enjoy our pools and parks this summer. HG has volunteered to be towel boy, so, uh, if you forget, he'll be there in the parking lot.
He's what?
Towel boy.
Towel boy.
Doing what, interpretive names?
Yeah.
Interpretive names.
Jerry?
Your honor.
Senior, your honor.
Go ahead, Jerry, you're good.
My condolences also to, uh, to Andy and his family. Um, just, uh, it's, it's tough losing a parent and, um, so just, uh, prayers and thoughts go out to them. Um, as we mentioned before, uh, Dr. Sullivan and his family, his wife, and I can't imagine what's going through their minds and thoughts and hearts and just, uh, you know, not even being a, you know, not a family member or anything, but it just breaks your heart when you hear something about, uh, a child. And I just, uh, I can't imagine, but, uh, we are thinking about you and, uh, our thoughts and prayers are certainly with you. Um, let's see, I, I just wanted to say thank you to those that came out tonight and spoke. Uh, you know, sometimes I think we, we feel like that maybe we're in a fishbowl and, and, uh, you're being shot at in a fishbowl sometime, but, uh, the, the open conversations, uh, and discussion, um, is what makes us be able to, to get things better and to know what people are thinking. And, uh, and when it's done in a respectful way, it's really appreciated. And, uh, those of you that came out tonight and spoke, you did that and I just want to say thank you. Uh, and, uh, for those on this, uh, this council, I appreciate y'all too. You know, we don't always agree, uh, and, uh, that's okay. You know, I've always said if we always agree, we only need one of us. And, um, I respect you guys for what you do, I respect you for what you say. Mark and Tim, I have been on, um, that committee and it is a tough committee. And, uh, I know you're trying to figure out, okay, what's, what do they want, what do we want? Sometimes we may not go along with maybe everything, but, um, I know y'all talked about this whole thing the other night. I watched it on, on video and y'all spent a lot of time on it, you know. I appreciate you, I appreciate you all. I'm, I'm honored to serve with you all, I'm honored. Um, and with that said, Raquel, I think you've got a daughter that, that graduated and, uh, congratulations to her. We've mentioned that, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, before, but, uh, that's a, that's a great honor. In two years, is that correct?
No.
Three years?
She graduated on time, she just started college early.
Okay.
She started a year early.
I, I don't, I can't comprehend that either. I can't comprehend that either, so, but that's awesome. And then we've got a lot of high school graduates in our community that I want to say congratulations to you all, and Smyrna, the burn, probably Central Middle, Stewart Creek, you know, just a lot of schools that they're going to around here, so it's a great honor, and we're proud of you, and we appreciate you all. And I do think I do have a slide, and I'm not surprised that I got the one talking about the 70s. So... The, this weekend, and I'm telling you, we went to some last year, and this is one of the highlights for me, is going to these on Friday night and listening to the music. And so this Friday, at the Lee Victory Recreational Park, we have that 70s band playing, and it starts at, Mike, help me.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay. There it is, okay. And so hope to see you out there. I've got another slide here, we've got the...
There'll be food trucks out there for that one, they're mine.
Food trucks cruise in if it's weather permitted.
Great. And then, um, let's see, we've got the Police and Fire Youth Academy. Smyrna Fire and Police Departments are proud to announce the return of the joint effort for the Police and Fire Youth Academy. The 2024 Smyrna Fire and Police Youth Academy will be held June 3rd through the 7th. This academy is designed for children ages 8 to 13. Activities will be held at the Smyrna Fire Station Number 2, that's on Fitzhugh Drive, or Fitzhugh Boulevard, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00. Monday through Thursday, students are going to participate in a graduation ceremony on June 7th, which is a Friday. Priority will be given to the town of Smyrna residents and first-time participants. The class is limited to 50 students, and applications will be processed on a first-come, first-served basis. Then you talk about following the link to get to it for additional information and to download the application. Completed application should be delivered with the registration fee of $35 to the Police Department on 400 Enon Springs Road East. And I have one other, which is love where you live. And, you know, you drive around through Smyrna, and you look at some of the yards, and sometimes maybe they don't love where they live, but for those of us that do, please respect it. And because we do love it, and we appreciate it, and there's a lot of people that do a lot of work to keep it that way, and if nothing else, just, it may not be great if you pick up for somebody else, but at least pick up for yourself. That's all I got.
All right, congratulations to the Jeff Cousses Scholarship winners. I hope this goes on for many, many years, but they will always be the first. So congratulations on being the first recipients. Raquel, your daughter graduated MTSU. I think Mary Esther had a niece graduate, so it's that time of the year. A lot of graduations and a lot of people going off to their next adventure, which is one of my slides we'll get to in just a second. And then, of course, I also want to remember Jimmy and Casey. Prayers for the Sullivan family, that they would just have peace and comfort. And I also continue to pray for Asher, that Asher would have God's touch on him, that he, if it's God's will and God's, God can do it, so let's do it. Jerry, I'm surprised you didn't mention it. We're all wearing blue or green shirts or ties or whatever tonight in honor of Asher. Blue and green is his favorite color, colors, so that's why we're all in blue and green tonight. I did not own a green tie, I looked everywhere, I thought I had one, I didn't. Jerry, yeah. It would have probably been old, but anyway. Yeah, I'm trying to. Kevin, I don't know what your son's name is, but my niece is getting married this weekend. They're not getting married to each other, are they? It makes me nervous when you said that, I was like, wait a minute.
I think you said she was a pretty good girl.
So, yeah, my niece is getting married Sunday, and she just graduated, she's the one that just graduated Baylor, so they have both graduated Baylor and then moved back to the middle Tennessee area. Actually, they're, Sean's working in Clarksville, so they're going to be commuting. But getting married on Sunday, so congratulations in advance to Sean and Lauren. I do have two slides. Last week, Mary Esther, Jeff Peach, and Mr. Spearman, we were all able to go out to Stewart Creek. They asked me to come speak to their, at their Military Signing Day, which is awesome. I think they had five, was it, was it five?
It was a total of seven, but...
There were two that were absent, yeah. There were seven folks that had committed to going into the military. We had the Navy, the Army, and the Marine Corps represented there. I was proud to say that there were two Marine Corps recruitsees. One of them is, has the highest, has a very high ASFAB, and is going to be off-flying drones. And the other one just looks like a Marine. He's a 17, 18-year-old kid, but he's just, when he walked in, it was like, that guy's got to be going in the Marine Corps. He just looks like a Marine. But it was fun, it was a great, great thing. I love, I love going to these type of events. College is not always the first step for everyone. A lot of folks go the military route. I did, and then I went back to college and got my bachelor's and my master's degree, so I'm not saying college isn't for everyone, it's just not the first step. So thanks for everything that they are volunteering to do, and that we wish them all the best in their career and their future service. Slide number two is on the same military theme. We have Memorial Day Ceremony coming up. Our Memorial Day Ceremony this year will be May 27th on Monday at 11:00 a.m. We'll be hosting that, or holding that, at the Captain Jeff Cousses Memorial at Lee Victory Park. Please come and remember those that have made the ultimate sacrifices for freedom. If, for some reason, the weather does not participate, we will move the event, it will still happen at 11 o'clock on the 27th, we'll just move it to the event center. So Monday, the 27th, at 11:00 a.m. That's all.
Mark, anything left?
I don't remember the gentleman's name who spoke, but I know you said you served in the Marine Corps, sir. Thank you for your service. We're going to be paying homage to those that sacrificed everything on that day, and I hope maybe you could come and attend and be a part of it. Public's welcome.
I have a unit called Young Marines left in the country.
Good deal, so thank you again for all your service and theirs as well. Want to say the same thing about Asher. You know, we've all been in prayer for the family, the soul of the family, and the reason we wore our blue and green tonight was in honor of that young man, and hopefully God will work his miracles and heal that young man, and if not, we just have to understand that's God's will. Now, we don't wish that, but we need to understand that, so. We didn't mention any of the storm families in Columbia. I know we sent some of our team down to Columbia to help with the tornado storm victims down there, so thank you, chief, for getting your crew down there to help out and help those families. National Police Week, Chief Urban, thank you for all your officers, and we want to recognize them for their service and their bravery. A lot of times they go out, and sometimes they're not sure if they're going to get to come home, you know? So National Police Week is a time just to recognize you guys for what you do all the time. But say thank you to your team for us, if you would. To Andy Miller and his family, Andy's a good friend of all of ours, and he's been around a long, long time. So Andy, our condolences to you about the loss of your father. I do have a couple of slides, and I don't have this one in front of me, so I'm just going to talk about it. Tim and I went Friday night, we went to a marathon, didn't we, Tim?
Yes, we did.
It was about a three-hour banquet with the FFA at Stewart Creek, and we got to watch all those young Future Farmers of America get a lot of awards, and we got to eat some food and some more awards, we got to eat some more, and more awards. So I think it was, it started at, we got there at 5:30, and I think we got out of there about 9:30.
About like tonight.
Close to like tonight, so. But congratulations to them, my niece is there in the middle, Lindsey Nicholas, she's the teacher for Future Farmer Program over at Stewart Creek School. So that was slide number one. Slide number two, this young man right here, earlier this month, received a message from Keegan Dietz praising Officer Mu Po. Just some simple good news, he says he wanted to shine the light on one of our town's Smyrna Police Department Officers, Mu Po. About an hour ago, according to this story, a small puppy nearly ran in front of his car while he was driving, and as he stopped to pull over to help the puppy, to safety, off-duty police officer Mu Po saw and pulled over and began to help. Po went on, he went through thick and thin bushes to help the scared and alone little puppy. It was infested with fleas and chitters. Here's a picture of him with his puppy. I thought I would share some simple good news in Smyrna, Tennessee today. So thank you again to our police officers for doing a kind gesture. Slide number two, and this is, I'm trying to move quick because you guys are probably tired of us talking tonight.
You've already done it.
Oh, already did that one? Thought I had another slide. Sorry, I got the slides backwards. I want to close with one thing. I spoke with a little passion tonight. I'm a pretty passionate guy when it comes to believing in this council, and believing in the people that I serve with, and trying to understand even when we have differences, respect. I hope the public sees that. Sometimes there are people in the public that don't or won't, refuse to, but that's beside the point. What I, my point about this is, when I speak with passion about what I do for a living and the people I get to work with, there's been hundreds of families over the years that I've gotten to help call Smyrna home, and it makes me pretty proud. So when somebody attacks me like that, that's why I get pretty passionate. I say that to say this, my passion is up here as well. This group has passion to make sure this community is done right and done with service to our community and to our citizens. That's all I had to say, I want to close with that.
Great. I have a couple of slides, I'll get through these quickly. I want to thank Jeff and Steve for getting up early with me. I know you two are not early birds either, and the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, the 21st Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast was held. It was sponsored by Greenhouse Ministries, and we appreciate them hosting the event. Also, all four of the mayors were there. I know there's five, but Chad was not there because Chad's a teacher, so four of the five were there.
Chad was there in spirit.
That's right, Chad was there in spirit, that's right. Also want to, a lot of people may not know about the Primary Care in Hope Clinic. They held their open house last week, and we were able to go out and take a tour. The Primary Care in Hope Clinic is over by Walmart and TCAT, and it is, it provides affordable health services to our community who are medically uninsured or underinsured. So if you've not had a chance to, and it also takes those that have full insurance, so they offer a great service to our community. Quite a few of you have talked about National Police Week today. I also want to thank all of those officers out there. Also want to take an opportunity to thank their families. I will tell you, Brett is an officer with the Sheriff's Department, and I can't tell you the number of nights he's up all night with a call or how much they take to heart the things that are happening. And we've talked a lot about Asher tonight, and my prayers have been with Jimmy and his wife and both boys, but also to those families that were there in that neighborhood, and to those first responders that had to respond to that incident. Don't forget to keep them in your prayers as well. Congratulations to Smyrna High School and Stewart's Creek High School graduates. Smyrna graduates on Sunday at 2:30, and Stewart's Creek graduates Sunday at 7:00. I personally have a graduate, my nephew Kenneth will be graduating from Stewart's Creek at 7:00, and that'll be our last one to get out of high school. So we're super excited for Kenneth, and we also have a list of graduates from here at the Town of Smyrna that have family that work here at the Town of Smyrna, so we would like to congratulate each one of those. Mike, I got to see Elijah graduate, too, so we were super proud of him. I think I got to snap the picture, so I need to get that to you and Jill on that day. Also, Mark, you talked about our Smyrna Fire Department personnel being deployed to help Murray County. They, it was requested by their chief and needed mutual aid, and, you know, we never miss an opportunity to step up when we can. So thanks to our Smyrna Fire Department firefighter, Aaron Gunter, Lieutenant Eric Mason, engineer Stephen Agostino, and engineer Randall Dixon. So thank you to all those individuals. I'd just like to say, thank you all for tonight. I know it was a long meeting, I think the process worked tonight. I know, as Mark has said and some of the others, we were pretty passionate about some of the things that have kind of been bothering us a little bit, and some of the things that, we just wanted the public to know that some of the things that we have to deal with, you may not always agree with us, but I think we all can be respectful to each other, and hopefully moving forward, we'll have more of that. So if there's nothing else, then we're adjourned.